I am ready, yes. Okay, okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Hello, everybody, nice to see you tonight. This is the city council meeting. It's our regular meeting on Wednesday, January 19, 2022, and it's just after 6:00 PM. May we please have a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Henze.
Here.
Councilmember Lines.
Here.
Councilmember Krantz.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Mosca.
Here.
And Mayor Blakespear.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the city council are present this evening.
Okay, thank you, and I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have one special presentation, a proclamation tonight, and I'm totally thrilled that we have three of our school board members here and our superintendent. So we have our superintendent of the San Diego Union High School District, Dr. Cheryl James Ward, and we also have three school board members, trustee Julie Bronstein, Katrina Young, and board president Maureen Muir. So thank you for coming. I'm going to invite you to come up here when I give the presentation. But I also just want to say that this welcoming and inclusion community proclamation, I would like to invite a number of community leaders to come and join me up here as I read it. So I'd like to invite the NAACP representatives who are here, the LGBTQ Resource Center, Encinitas for Equality members, the Encinitas Equity Committee, and the Anti-Defamation League, and anyone else who feels like they care about this topic and would like to come and join me up here. I'm going to read the proclamation and say a few words, and so I'd like to be able to present it to all of us as a group. So if you can join me over there, that'd be great. Hello, hello. Hello, hello, come on up, come on up. Okay, that's good, that's good. Okay, so this is really exciting. It's a bit of a love fest up here. Everybody's seeing each other again and meeting each other for the first time. So I'm really excited that everybody's come out today and is standing with us. So what's prompting this proclamation is that we had homophobic and racist slurs that were graffitied on one of our high school campuses, San Diego Academy, at the beginning of this year. And I think, as the superintendent said in a quote that I read in the newspaper, "We really want to have," and I'm paraphrasing, "but we want to have a community where a youth does not wake up in the middle of the night and get out of bed and get a spray can and go to the high school to communicate these messages in our community." And so how do we create that welcoming community and how do we reaffirm those values? Because really, when somebody is doing that, spray painting those messages on a local school campus, what they're really saying is they're communicating exclusion, they're communicating stigmatization, they're communicating bias. And I think that the questions of inclusion and exclusion are things that we deal with in our city in a lot of different contexts, and it's important that we recognize what's happening and that we not normalize that kind of thing, and that we also state what kind of community we do want to be, because we want to reaffirm the value of every human. And so the proclamation that I've written, with a little bit of help from the city staff initially, but I put a lot of thought into writing it, and I think it's really good. So I do want to read the whole thing. You can see how long it is. It's not longer than any other proclamation, but it begins with a number of whereases. So this is a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the City of Encinitas, along with all of the Encinitas City Council members. So whereas, "The City of Encinitas is committed to ensuring that its residents, visitors, and students prosper, enjoy a sense of safety, and feel welcome. And whereas, 'The City values and recognizes that people of all races, ethnicities, religions, sexualities, and gender identities are valued members of our community. And whereas, expressions of hate, intolerance, discrimination, or stereotyping toward others causes real harm to individuals and to communities, and it can result in disadvantaging members of the community when it comes to housing, education, employment, criminal justice, and health. And whereas, 'The City embraces a culture in which we treat one another with human dignity and respect, and we desire as a city to be known for our values and our commitment to inclusivity of all people. And whereas, 'We recognize that a proclamation or a single action in and of itself will not change a community, but rather that we are all responsible, both individually and collectively, for creating and fostering a tolerant, unbiased, and welcoming community in our words and our actions, and that we must actively acknowledge and stand up against bias and discrimination of all kinds. Now therefore I, Catherine Blakespear, mayor of the City of Encinitas, along with all council members, proclaim the condemnation of bias and hate in all its forms and reaffirm our community values of respect, inclusivity, civility, and equality for all, and urge every organization in our community to stand with us.'" So I'd like to invite the superintendent or the school board president or others to say something if you want to, but you don't have to. I told you in advance you didn't have to speak, so.
Well, actually, I wrote something, and I think it's good, too, but that's okay. Hate speech or action, hate is unacceptable towards any race or any group at any time or any place. Our district will continue to teach acceptance and equality. We'll also continue to call out evil actions when we see them, and we'll hold them accountable for their actions with no exception. While we're experiencing a more negative social environment locally and globally and dealing with the extended pandemic, we must also realize this will pass. Like always, we'll get by this because we have great doctors, scientists, teachers, parents, amazing kids, doing great things every day. While calling out the bad, we should also remember to call out the good. We have amazing community, amazing parents, amazing kids. Every day, they're doing amazing things, and I will make sure that we don't lose focus on those children. Good deeds and good actions happen by good people every day. Thank you.
I didn't prepare anything, but I shall say a few words, if you don't mind. And I'm going to start with love, because I just think it's so important for us to love each other as individuals, as human beings. And if we lived in that space, we wouldn't have the other issues that we have, which are really based on fear and misunderstandings or no understanding whatsoever. And so it's part of our job as a district to ensure that we understand all of our kids. That's part of our DEI work, to ensure that we understand who we serve, to understand their trials and tribulations. That's part of ethnic studies. It's really about understanding all of the Americas or Americans. And as we begin to understand ourselves as Americans, as community members, all of our community members, then I think we will be much better off. But in the meantime, until then, we will continue to call out hate, we will continue to address it, and we will continue to educate.
And so, do you want to hold this and we'll take a picture? So scoot in. And we also have our other superintendent here, Dr. Gray, I want to recognize her. Okay, we'll scoot in and we'll take a picture here. Yeah. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Madam Mayor, one of the things I would like to point out is that back in 2015, I participated in an event at the Leach Tag Foundation Ranch, and ADL was involved, and it was a great presentation, and Lisa, Councilmember Schaefer and I were both there. And out of that, we did a council member-initiated item to become a formal welcoming community. And so there is a webpage on the city's website that has a number of resources that were developed as a follow-up to that process, and I really appreciate the reaffirmation that we had tonight. I think it is very important that, at this particular time, that we emphasize these points of inclusion and being welcoming, so thank you.
Yes, and I appreciate your original work to bring that forward, and I do remember what a difficult meeting that was. So it's nice to see that, in many ways, it seems like the culture has evolved a bit, so that's great.
It was amazing to have a full chamber of people that didn't think it was necessary. And then the years ahead, the next four years, it became clear that we have some issues to address here in this country. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on to oral communications. Do we have some?
Yes, Mayor, we do have six, but before I start, just a reminder that we do have a time-certain agenda item, which is item 10A at 6:30. So we'll see how many we get through. I'll call you three at a time. First is Camilla Banks, or Camilla Rang, followed by Stephen Lord, followed by Geraldine Kessler. And a reminder that you each have three minutes.
It's a very nice proclamation, thank you. My name is Camilla Rang. I live in Del Mar. I'm standing here before you today as a very concerned California resident. Tomorrow, NCTD board members will vote whether they should defy the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Act and begin the construction to fence off Del Mar from the bluff and the beach before any environmental or geological impact reports have been performed. This is against the strict and very clear wordings from the Coastal Commission in a letter to Sandag two weeks ago. This is against the wishes of the people of San Diego County and other visitors who come to our beaches in millions every year. It's against the wishes of the Surf Rider Foundation, and it's definitely against the wishes of your neighboring city of Del Mar. Not even Sandag are standing up for NCTD on this issue. They are standing alone in their attempt to kill and undermine the Coastal Act. As you understand, this is not only going to happen in Del Mar. If this goes through, it will happen everywhere that NCTD runs their railroad. Gone is local control, and NCTD will get free reigns to raise any kind of construction they seem fit without ever having to negotiate with a local city. Sadly, it is Encinitas' NCTD board member that is spearheading this environmentally and geologically destructive project. If this vote goes through, your town, Encinitas, will forever be connected with the city that declared war on the Coastal Act. And this will happen under your leadership, Mayor Blakespear. That's a very heavy load to carry for someone who plans to run for the Senate representing California. Such serious offense will not go unseen. NCTD has spread false rumors that Del Mar has not participated in the negotiations in good faith. That is not true. Del Mar has, in fact, suggested many solutions that will be both cheaper and safer, both for the public and the environment, than the continuous 1.7-mile-long, six-foot-high fence that NCTD proposed, but to no avail. NCTD only went in with two possibilities, a six-foot-high fence or a four-foot fence. And if we did not agree to the four-foot, we will get the six-foot. This is not a negotiation. That was pure bullying. Tomorrow, the vote to start the construction of six-foot fences at Del Mar is taking place. Please advise your NCTD board member to postpone the vote until environmental and geological impact report has been performed according to the Coastal Act. A yes vote would be seen as a war act against the Coastal Commission. I don't know anyone who would want that on their name, and I don't think you do either. Please do the right thing and stand up for the Coastal Act. Thank you so much, and God bless you.
Is it okay if I lower my mask, or can you hear me okay? Yeah, it's a little easier. Yeah, Stephen Lord, I'm a long-term resident. I moved here in 1983. I got interested in hearing what the Equity Committee had to say yesterday, and I went there, and it was interesting, but I came away with the feeling it's really not important. You know, this is a welcoming community, was a welcoming community in 1983. It's still the same. It's not, you know, it's not a problem. So we should focus on what common sense tells us are real problems in the city. You know, on the way here, my car bumped over a whole bunch of potholes. I know it's kind of boring, but the rest of us would, you know, would like those potholes fixed. City services aren't that exciting. I can understand how people on the council want to do more exciting things, but we would like you to apply some common sense and deal with the kitchen table issues that we face, like those kind of things. So as an example, tonight, you've got several things you've got to look at. 10C, the City of Encinitas is not a spoiled sports city. This is not the kind of place where you're going to shut, you should shut down balloons, for goodness sake, punishing children who want to have a little fun. I mean, that is like, as anti-Encinitas as you could possibly be, and is a total lacking in common sense, so I can't believe you would support that. On the other hand, on 12A, with a very common sense proposal to bring back control of our local zoning to us, that's the sort of thing we ought to be getting behind full-time and not diverting ourselves on these other things. And I will say, item 12B is an example of the opposite thing, where, you know, banning ghost guns. Well, a ghost gun you can't even find anyway, so how are you going to ban it? And it's going to be a waste of sheriff's resources to try and do anything, or it's just going to be a waste of time. So I would ask the city council to focus on the important things and not focus on things that really don't matter to the average person in Encinitas. They may matter to activists, they may matter to people who show up here, but the average person doesn't really care. What they would like to do is let the city to run, they'd like the roads to be, you know, clear and actually not full of traffic. They'd like to be able to park downtown, they'd like to be able to go downtown, they'd like to be safe in their houses, they'd like to not worry that if they order something from Amazon, someone's going to steal it off their porch. That's what the people of the city want, and I would implore the city council that when they go through this, all this stuff you've got to do tonight, I know it's a lot of work, think about what's a common sense thing to do, not the particular wording of a certain phrase or anything like that. So thank you very much. I hope you don't resent the appeal to common sense, but I think I speak for a lot of people in Encinitas, so that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
Next speaker is Geraldine Kessler, followed by Trina Priest.
I would like to speak about the proposed density bonus environmental nightmare staver project on Melba Road that is slated to take down a mature grove of tory pines, 173 trees, and 30 smaller trees, along with demoing a beautiful historical home built in 1938. Our local neighborhood and children walking to school have traveled Melba Road walkways for many years, admiring the beautiful tree line which serves as Encinitas Redwoods. The property abuts the last rural horse farm in Encinitas, the Boys and Girls Garden and Club, Oak Crest Park and Middle School, and the Encinitas Community Center. The housing project would negatively impact so many people's lives, similar to the way the Goodson Project did to Alvenheim and Rancho Santa Fe. This sacred land was once owned by the original property owner of the Botanical Gardens, Anton Van Ambersfuerst, in 1938, which we discovered when we uncovered a deed with his name on the property dated 1938. Not only this fact, but I also learned that he was a key player in providing water to Encinitas from Lake Hodges. While researching this, it seems like this process was a long and uphill battle, kind of similar to the Locadia streetscape. This project went over budget much longer than they had anticipated, perhaps due to the depression in the '30s and '40s, but the members of the Water Board pushed on, and this in turn made Encinitas what is known today as the flower capital of the world. This piece of property is sacred to Encinitas' history, and I don't even have to point this out, because you can walk the neighborhood on Melba Road and feel it. Please work with the community to acquire this valuable piece of historical property from the Staver Trust with soft infrastructure funds for open space with community fundraising and possibly turning the space into an extension of the Botanical Gardens, an outdoor STEM lab for local schools, or park similar to the setup of San Diego Park in Solana Beach. Thank you for listening.
Trina will be followed by Teri Skelly.
Good evening, Mayor Blakespear and city council members. I am a middle school teacher who has spoken here before regarding what we see with our students' mental health needs. The lead story in December was the U.S. Surgeon General Vivek H. Murthy's public health advisory on the mental health challenges confronting our youth. This is a rare warning and call to action to address what he called "an emerging crisis exacerbated by pandemic hardships." Symptoms of depression and anxiety have doubled during the pandemic, with 25% of youth experiencing depressive symptoms and 20% experiencing anxiety symptoms, according to Murthy's 53-page advisory. The 53-page Surgeon General's advisory calls on those who surround young people and shape their day-to-day lives, schools, healthcare systems, media, and government. Regarding government, the city's marijuana storefronts can have an unfortunate impact on our children by promoting and normalizing marijuana use as a solution for stress and anxiety. It will be important that the city notify nearby businesses and residents that a marijuana application is in a process near them. Thank you for your consideration, because avoiding a substandard vetting process is one of the crucial aspects of the application procedure, not later when the damage has already been done. Thank you.
Teri will be followed by Kelly McCormick.
Good evening. I'm a mother of three sons for whom COVID has been a devastating experience. It appears that we will all have marijuana businesses, whether we want them or not, and parents are almost defenseless against their advertising and promotions. I read in the UTM Monday a very concerning article regarding the illicit marijuana market. The article is titled "Legal, Illicit Blur in California Pot Market." It starts off by describing what marijuana insiders say about the industry itself. Industry leaders are not shy about stating working both sides of the street. One marijuana industry leader spoke to the Associated Press on the condition of anonymity to avoid possible prosecution. He goes on to explain how a marijuana company can have two identities, one legal and the other illicit. I quote, "We basically subsidize our white market with our black market. This idea..." This idea of selling out the back door illegally and the front door with a permit is not uncommon. It has been seen throughout the state. Tonight I ask you how you will properly vet your applicants. Will there be a detailed background check on all applicants and employees, not only on their current application, but on previous employment history, looking into possible prior offenses with the least illegal markets? It's been common, it's been a commonplace for applicants to hide behind an LCC. I hope this will not be tolerated in Encinitas, because it's not the type of transparent application process that we want." Thank you.
And Kelly will be followed by Youssef Miller.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator with a focus on youth alcohol, tobacco, and drug prevention. I'm also the parent of a college student and a high school student. As I'm sure you've experienced yourselves at some time, it is hard to convince adolescents and teens that something is dangerous when they would rather believe otherwise. It's true for messages like "always wear a bike helmet with the strap connected," "don't stay up all night texting your friends when you have to be at school at 7:30 the next morning," and "don't use marijuana, because it can cause serious problems with your mental health and the way your brain develops." The marijuana industry has done a masterful job of marketing pot as a way to deal with depression or anxiety. It's worse than an emotional bypass. Marijuana causes those conditions, or makes them worse if they're already preexisting. But you don't have to take my word for it. The American Psychiatric Association just published a warning about marijuana use, saying in part, quote, "Given the lack of scientific support for safe cannabis use and the known adverse impacts and risk for addiction, the American Psychiatric Association opposes the use of cannabis by children, adolescents, and young adults up to age 25, and that's because their brains are still developing. If we as a community truly want to take action to improve the lives of young people and reduce the likelihood that they will experience a mental health crisis, we will do all we can to make marijuana prevention a priority." Thank you for your time.
My name is Youssef Miller. I'm with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition, the North County NAACP, and various other groups. I want to thank you for the proclamation that you submitted today. It really stands up to your motto of the city, to look out for the people and the communities that you serve. And it's very, very important that we don't make the mistake to think that this is not Encinitas, or this is not Escondido, or this is not us. This is us, but we have to stand together to make sure that we remove this from our culture, from our people, to make sure kids understand they're not destroyed from a mistake, but at the same time, they learn that this is not acceptable in a world of inclusion and diversity. We're preparing them for a larger world. That larger world includes people of different races, people of different religions, people of different abilities, people of different, all different kinds of persuasions, genders, or whatever. So we need to make sure that we communicate that from our standpoint as adults. They model us, they imitate us, and our children are a reflection of us. So we have to make sure that we understand that. I'm also with Clean Earth for Kids, so I want to make sure that I emphasize that we should stay away from pesticides in our communities. They affect our children, their growth, and they also have runoff into our rivers and streams and the beautiful beaches of Encinitas, as well as the balloons that, that are poisoning and toxining, toxicking our water and making its way into our, our wildlife. So when we're looking at people, we're looking at ghost guns, we're looking at all of these things, we need to make sure that we look at it in a way that benefits everyone, whether they're affected by it or not. Whether they're affected by it or not is the question that we're asking, and the question is, the answer is, it doesn't matter. If it's right, it's right, and we should do what is right for the community of Encinitas and stand as a leader to other cities throughout this, this wonderful county. Thank you very much.
Mayor, that does conclude oral communications, and now we can move to item 10A, which is our time-certain item.
Okay, great. Thank you very much to the public commenters. Item 10A is our third public hearing in the redistricting process, and we have our Administrative Services Director Schwarm and our Special Counsel Scannell to take this matter. So we'll let you set up and then go ahead. And how many public comments do we have on this?
Four.
Four? Okay.
My name is Jay Schwarm, Administrative Director for City of Encinitas. I'd like to reintroduce our attorney, Special Counsel assisting with redistricting, Christopher Scannell, and also Shannon Kelly, who is from the National Demographics, who is here both to do the presentation. This is our third public hearing. At this hearing, you will see 39 maps, and they're grouped in grouping concepts. The goal of this meeting is to take a look at different concepts, to obtain some public input and council input, and then to take a look at, with a goal of whittling it down to three or four or less, to bring back to the next public hearing so that we can either adopt or further discuss. Also, this, we have a translator here. Her name is Anna Nava, and she has a message for the audience.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Anna Nava Colin, y soy la traductora certificada que está aquí para ayudar traduciendo del inglés al español. Voy a estar en el salón Poinsetia si alguien necesita mis servicios. Gracias.
So she is here to translate in Spanish, and she is located in the Poinsetia Room, and people can call in. Shannon?
Great, thank you very much.
Wait, I'm sorry. Let's just pause on this a second so that anybody who might be listening who wants to participate speaking Spanish, they could call in, meaning they could call to her in the Poinsetia Room?
That is correct.
Okay, and so do we want to announce a phone number or a way for that somebody to make that happen?
I thought she did, but I'm sorry.
I'm pretty sure she didn't. Speaking a tiny bit of Spanish, I heard the Poinsetia Room, but I didn't hear a phone number.
She didn't give a phone number, and I just wanted to ask as well. I know a lot of folks might be interested in rewatching this recording, and I'm hopeful that we can make sure that the recording is also available in Spanish, instead of if somebody doesn't show up tonight, that they would be able to listen to it later.
We don't need a phone number. The way it works is with radios, so I have the radios over there. La manera en que funciona es por medio de radios, entonces por eso es que estoy en ese salón, porque si estoy aquí, la señal de mis radios no se puede escuchar. Okay? So, now I understand. Thank you. So my cellphone number is 760-707-7359.
Well, it's very nice of you to announce your cellphone number publicly.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But I think, I mean, I think the goal is that people should be able to participate in English or in Spanish. So if there's a public, a public commenter wants to participate, and they would like it to be translated so that we could hear what the public commenter was saying, that you would come back, right, that you would announce that you would come back and you would make that translation so that we could, we could hear what the public commenter was saying.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's just that I usually do, do it through the radios, so I honestly didn't bring the, I have the number, but I don't have the key to enter to the call conference.
No, it's fine. I mean, if the radio is here, then I guess that, that will work if somebody comes.
Yes, that will work. That's the way.
Okay, yeah, or if the goal is to be more accessible, but we have to explain it so that people know what to, how to access it.
I will have it ready for next time. Sorry about that.
No worries. It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I give her a minute? Yeah.
Jase, there also was a question if the entire session could be translated and replayed.
We'll discuss it with Nava.
Great, well, I think we've had enough time. I'll get us started. Again, my name is Shannon Kelly. I'm with National Demographics Corporation. I'm happy to be back here again today. So the goal is, I'm going to walk you through a presentation, give us some reminders about the process, some framework for any public comment, and then I'm excited to share with you the draft maps that have been coming in from the public. So let me just start with a little bit of context, in case we have members of the audience who haven't been here before, but we're in the middle of a redistricting process that happens every 10 years when the census is taken, and the city of Encinitas needs to relook at its council map to make sure it complies with these redistricting rules and, and guidelines. Basically, we need to comply with federal law, which is Equal Population and Voting Rights Act. We need to make sure this middle box here, we comply with the California Fair Maps Act, and so we're meeting the criteria that the state of California has given us. And then on the right-hand side, we need to look towards some other traditional redistricting principles, things that have come out in case law that will guide us also to make sure that you're selecting a map that is compliant. Here is also a slide you've seen before, but this is, just gives everybody the context of how long has this process been going on and where do we stand in it? The Fair Maps Act in California requires cities to have four public hearings, so we've been through all the big checkbox boxes here, but we're on public hearing number three right now, and then that will prepare us for the last public hearing, which will take place in March, to meet a statutory deadline of April 17th to have the map selected. So let me remind everybody of what Encinitas looks like right now. What we see here is the current city council district map, and these numbers we've talked about before, but basically, what's important about this map is it is technically a balanced population. So anything that has a deviation between how far the littlest district and the biggest district is from your ideal population, as long as it's below 10%, you're considered to be balanced from an equal population standpoint. I just will caution everybody, we've had questions about this slide. The numbers in the box are not how much a district has grown or shrunk with the census or, or anything like that. It is how far that district is from what we're told the ideal population will be for that district going forward. So just a quick reminder, on the website, we do have some redistricting tools that people can use, whether it's a paper mapping kit or our online District R tool to draw maps, and I am happy to announce there's been great success with that, because as we turn to this page, you will see that we have a total of 63 draft maps. And the way it breaks down, in the, the top, you see I've put the total number of draft maps. We had 60 maps that were submitted by the public by the deadline that we had set in order to be able to process for today, and that was January 5th. NDC has also produced three maps that we've put in for consideration, so that makes 63 total. There were 24 of those maps that were incomplete, or clearly somebody was just drawing one district or a community, or they were significantly unbalanced or had some other continuity or contiguous, this issue. So those are not going to be shown. You're going to see 39 maps tonight. So for those of us who do this for a living, this is very exciting. I don't know if you'll think 39 maps is super exciting, but let me tell you, Jase mentioned we've grouped them. So let me stop here on this page, and I'll give you the context of what you're going to see in these pages of maps. So basically, on each of the following pages, you're going to see two or three maps grouped together. And the way you look at this, they all have an identifying number, so you can know what map you're looking at, and they all basically have a number at the bottom, which is their deviation. So a few slides ago, I said, in order to be considered balanced, we have to be less than 10%. There's really not that much difference. Once you're under 10, 1.15 versus 4.66 really doesn't mean that much, but this is giving you where you are in the range. Let me call out one or two other things before I embark on our lots of maps. Ignore the colors. So what we've done is, the colors don't mean anything, other than they represent the districts that were drawn. If somebody wanted that northwest district to be in blue, and that's what they did in District R, we honor that, and it'll be in blue. So just because somebody might have a certain area in purple versus somebody has it in blue isn't, isn't meaningful. You're really looking at the boundaries and, and the lines. And then finally, I will point out for you, members of the council and also the public, there are data sheets behind every single one of these maps. They were included in your packet. They're available online, so there's a whole demographic breakdown for each of these maps that you can see. So let's start. On this page, what I'm going to highlight is kind of how these maps are similar and how they might differ from the existing map. And so what you see here are three maps that really are rather similar to what you have. However, they take the north strip of New Encinitas, which it kind of looks like a finger on the map, and they move it from the coastal district where it is now over to the most eastern district. And hopefully, that's how you would consider, I would consider that the north strip of New Encinitas. I'm going to say that a lot, so if I'm saying that wrong, let me know. But that strip, basically, that you see where the purple and the pink come together on the north boundary, though, these three maps move that to the east and don't keep it in the coastal district. So now I'm going to pick up the pace. This next set of three maps does the exact same thing. There's nuances that are different, but you've got the similarity to the structure of what you have today, but you'll notice that all three of the maps on this page take that north strip of New Encinitas, move it from the coastal district to the eastern And we get another page, so we have another three maps that attempt to do that as well. I will make a note that the map on the right-hand side, you notice it has a star and it's 20.92, so that is not compliant as it is with our 10% balance. And we left it in here because we think that there was a District R issue with how they handled it, and this was one, if there was something about this you liked, we could be directed to make some tweaks to try to get it to 10%. So we didn't want to exclude it from you taking a look. And now we have three more of, of the theme, where again, what makes these the most different from what you have today is looking at that northern strip of New Encinitas going over to the eastern district. Ah, now we have something different. So what these three maps have in common is they all do the same thing with that north strip of New Encinitas, taking it to the eastern district, but then, if you go down to the bottom of Olivenheim, you'll see that they move, all three of them move that section over to that south coast district, as opposed to keeping all of Olivenheim intact straight down the eastern border of Encinitas. And here's another set of maps. Again, there's tweaks and differences between them, but they do those two key components that are different. Now here, what you have, what changed on this page is these two maps, again, take some of that north section of New Encinitas, move it to the eastern district, but they find a way to keep all of the Olivenheim area all the way down to the south together in that eastern district. And here, I really was out of order. This goes back to the page before where you've got the north Encinita strip to the east and Olivenheim, that south portion going to that coastal district. And here's another page of, of those that do that, and again, you see I've starred that one map on the right. It is out of balance. If there was something about it that you really liked... If there was something about it that you really liked, we could be directed to make So, here are two maps that keep that north strip of New Encinitas where it is in the current map. So, you'll see, in this map, they're in pink, and it stays to that western coastal district. Now, we finally make another change. So, the maps on this page only have two coastal districts. They don't have three. So, I'll let you look at that for a second, because they're making a little bit of different cuts on the coast. And then, this page is a little bit of a hodgepodge. It actually has, well, the map on the left here is two coastal districts, like the maps on the previous page. The middle map might have had some, some district, we're not sure if it's a District R problem or not, but this one, the middle map, is attempting to let every district touch the coast. And then, finally, as my friend, Mr. Scannell, here pointed out to me, this last map on the right-hand side, NDC 103, is misplaced. It actually should have been presented with the three-coast maps. It's accidentally found its way here. And then, these maps, actually, this and the next page are going to have some maps that just give you one coast. We haven't heard a lot of feedback about that in the process, but there were a few maps that came in with one coastal district. And here are two more of those single-coast district maps. So, that was a lot. I tried to move through it quickly. I will say, as your demographer, I have spent the better half of the last week and a half staring at all of these maps and everything that went in, and I think the biggest takeaway for me and for our company is, the vast majority of the maps that came in are keeping the core of the structure that you have. They're keeping the core of the structure you have on the coast, and a lot of them seem to be focused in two areas, up at that very north middle and down in the south in Olivenhein, of making some tweaks around the edges. So, this is my last slide. We're kind of, what are we looking for from input from the public and actions for the evening? Is really trying to get down to which maps you like, which maps you don't, from a public standpoint and from the council standpoint. Are there any modifications that you want to direct us to take a look at? And then, we do need to have a goal of narrowing the field to a manageable number of maps, because we, going into public hearing number four is where we'd want the final public comment on the maps that you're most considering, so we can be focused on a decision. And with that, I will conclude.
Okay. I'm curious if the number of maps submitted seems to you like a lot for a jurisdiction, or does it seem like a little or normal?
I would say it's a lot. I mean, I know of clients who have more, but you topped the list of mine, so that is quite a few maps, yes.
Okay, great.
And I will say, if I may, Madam Mayor, I did check the District R gallery, because we had a January 5th cutoff, just because we had to process, and there's only one additional map that's come in, and it doesn't look like a complete map.
Okay, great.
But it will be processed.
Okay. Well, great. Let's hear the public comments, and then we'll get to the council.
Okay, so we will open the public hearing?
Yes, I'll open the public hearing.
All right. The first three speakers, Mark Mayer, Bruce Ayers, and then Julie Thunder.
Good evening. My name's Mark Mayer. I'm the president of the Olivenhein Town Council, located at 423 Ranches Santa Fe Road. The OTC has reviewed the draft council redistricting maps currently being put forth by the city of Encinitas. Several of the draft maps have proposed to split the community of Olivenhein into multiple city council districts. The OTC Board of Directors opposes any redistricting plans that attempt to split the existing and longstanding boundaries of our community into more than one council district. While the OTC Board of Directors recognizes the redistricting process involves balancing many considerations, maintaining Olivenhein in one contiguous council district is an extremely important issue to the OTC. Olivenhein is a 138-year-old community and well-established, and the well-established boundaries of the community have remained constant since before the city's incorporation in 1986. Residents of Olivenhein, whether they live north or south of Encinitas Boulevard, I live south of Encinitas Boulevard, identify with the community of Olivenhein as a whole. The OTC Board of Directors has expressed its view on this matter in a letter to the council dated October 28th, as well as another letter sent to the council earlier today. Thank you for your consideration.
It's okay if I take it off? Cool. Let's see. There we go.
Nice to have our planning commissioner here. We rarely see him here at city council.
Yeah.
Looking forward to your comments, Bruce.
You normally keep me so busy that I don't have time to come, but we've had all of, except our upcoming joint meeting with you, we're free all this month, and I'm going to be gone for the first month, the first meeting in February, so I've had like six, eight weeks off. So, nothing to do, I thought I'd come talk to you. So, I thought I'd come give you some comments on the redistricting of maps, and I'll be brief. You can go to my general comments. The current, I don't know if you can, if somebody can.
There should be a click.
There we go. Oh, this will click? See, I'm never on this side of the dais lately. So, currently, the districts are presumptively compliant, although granted, they're near the edge, and I would recommend exercising what I would call a light hand. In other words, you know, people don't like moving out of their districts. I think even page two of the presentation showed that there is a preference not to move and change district representation, so, but take the opportunity to correct the discrepancies, reduce the total deviation below 9.69, and minimize, as I said, minimize the changes, and then rebalance the total. So, I'll go into some very easy, specific recommendations. Let's see if I can figure this. There we, oh, there we go. The first one is, you know, and this is only because it's right near my neighborhood. Morning Sun is an old neighborhood in Olivenhein, and it's mysteriously split. And, you know, literally, people across the street in Morning Sun are in one district or the other district. It's just that one little, you can see the kind of light red I outlined there. That's actually in Tony's district, and then the gray immediately adjacent is the same neighborhood. And I've seen a lot of the new maps do correct this, so I would advise, and it actually improves the balance where you need to improve it, in moving some more into the District Four, Olivenhein. And it's a neighborhood served by one street accessing only Ranchos Santa Fe, yet it's grouped with streets that only access, really, El Camino Real. The other one, the other specific recommendation I have is to reduce the Cardiff Northern Extension, the one that went all the way up to Mark Mayer's house. That clearly was probably not the best choice, in my opinion, and so I have it outlined, opened-ended in red, and I think a lot of the recommendations do that. They move that edge down. And again, this would, District Three, which is Cardiff, is the one that is high by 1,050-some, right, 1,053. So, you need to move that down anyways, and it would bring everything more in compliance, and you would obviously share that with others. Now, I didn't do a map yet. If you, if your discussion says this is a good idea and you want to do a light hand, I can come back with something similar. I saw quite a few that represent pretty close to what I'm describing here. The last point I would make about this is I would maintain the Cardiff boundary with the traditional Cardiff-Santa Fe road as much as practically feasible. And I think I saw quite a few of the maps do that, honor that, and that's consistent with the guidelines you had discussed previously, where you wanted to go along our community boundaries where you could. The last one is, and this is my last thing, is to eliminate map 64605. It was really a strange one, and I think if you go through the statutory requirements, if you go through your own guidance, splitting Olivenhein down the middle like that and trying to, and I'm going to use the word gerrymander, gerrymander something all the way from the most north, northeastern corner all the way to the coast and then down the coast is a bit ridiculous, so I would hope you would come out of tonight and just delete that one, and let's move on. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Thunder, followed by Chris Stewart.
Hi again. On the maps, I agree with absolutely everything the last two speakers said, so if everything they wanted, you could add a third vote to, I would appreciate that. Any map that divides Cardiff should not be advanced to the next step, period. We are a community unto itself, so you need to take that into consideration, and I think any of the maps, the ones with the two coastal districts and the ones that divide Cardiff and do wonky things with Cardiff and Olivenhein, I think those should be eliminated tonight and not considered further. Cardiff is over 100 years old, and we celebrated that milestone with a parade, and the grand marshal of that parade was Marion Ross, the star of Happy Days. So, we have our own history and our own community that is valuable and worth keeping intact. We have our own ZIP code, 92007, and we fought hard to keep it. We have our own U.S. Post Office. We have our own branch of the county library. We have our own famous sidewalk, our own youth soccer club, our own school district, which is separate from the Encinita schools. We have our own state park, San Alejo State Beach. Again, we have our own history, which includes a history book that's in publication, and it's sitting on my living room shelf. We have celebrities, including Marion Ross, Rob Machado, and others that live secretly in our community because they love it so much. If you looked at the entire city of Encinitas, I think it's clear that specifically Cardiff and Olivenhein are the most distinct communities in our city. Each should remain in its own unique voting district, and it should absolutely, they should absolutely not be combined like I think at least one map showed. Lucadia is certainly also unique, as is old Encinitas, as is new Encinitas, and they each deserve their own representation. So, don't divide them when it's clear that there's distinct lines, and 92007 is a distinct line. You can pull it up on any map and see where the boundaries are, and several of your maps respected that.
Now, we forgot the mask. Hi, I'm Chris Stewart, and I've lived here since two years before we incorporated, and it's really been a lot of fun watching Encinitas grow up. I really liked what Bruce Ayers said, this reduce the Cardiff Northern Extension. That, I wholeheartedly agree with that. And I just, I really want to say, what I think is useful is the fact that many of the maps allow three districts to have access to the coast, to the Coast Highway, to Interstate Five, and to El Camino Real. And so, some of the others that were a little bit squiggly and all, to accomplish that, I hope don't get supported. I do have one little, one, no, one little, one big question. The demographer said that three of the maps were done by NDC. Which ones were they? And I know I can't get that answered, so, but keep up the good work. It's going to be great, and you don't want just a list of no, yes, and such, but just make them all really compact, and don't let Cardiff reach. Thank you.
That concludes public speakers.
Okay. Well, thank you to those of you who came out to speak on this item, and for all the many people who submitted maps, because it's great to have so much engagement over this. So, I'll go to my council colleagues, Councilmember Hensy.
Yeah, I had that same question that Chris Stewart had about which of the three maps that were submitted were done by the consultant, and also, the order in which those were done. So, were those done to supplement gaps that might have been existing when, after the public submitted theirs, or were those just preliminary and early on?
Yes, if I may respond. I actually brought us to the page, let me go to, if I can go to slideshow and make it bigger, so you'll see how to identify those. So, we did label them. They have a different labeling. They don't have all the digits. Oh, there you go. Hear me? They are labeled NDC. It's 101, 102, and 103. And what we traditionally do is, we will look sometimes for gaps, just to, you know, make sure people are thinking, or sometimes we'll do a minimal change. So, in this case, NDC 101 was trying to do a minimal change type of map. They were done towards the end of the process, and they're just for provoking thought, you know, there's nothing that biases one way or another.
Can you show the NDC 101? Because this is 102.
Yes, let's find it. There it is. It's the one that's 4.5% on the left-hand side.
But that's a major change, because there are only two districts on the coast now.
Oh, my apologies. Then it, my apologies.
Maybe it's three, 103.
It's 103, that's the minimal change.
Okay.
Yep. Which is on the right-hand side of this page.
That almost reminds me of the horizontal strips that we saw the first time, which I think was unanimously kind of dispensed with as not being good. So, this is like vertical strips instead of horizontal strips that don't look good either.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, oh, did, was that it? Councilmember Hensy, do you want to make any other comments right now?
Yeah, I can make some preliminary comments. So, I am in agreement that the three coastal districts should maintain their access to the coast. I'm not in favor of any, you know, super coastal district or any combination of the two others. I think when people say, you know, "Don't break up Cardiff," or "Don't break up Olivenhein," what they're also saying is, "Don't combine with another community that has a really strong identity." So, I like, I like the light-hand terminology that Bruce Ayers used to describe, where I think we're headed, which is not anything too severe from where we are, but the need to rebalance and get a little bit closer to a smaller deviation. Let's see. Yeah, those were, those were my main comments for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moscow.
Yeah, no, I'm glad to see how we've progressed with this process, because I think that clearly, we've gotten a number of people to participate in the public, which is good, and I think that may have even exceeded the first time, which I thought was really an awesome, you know, outreach and really a great opportunity for members of the public, residents, to kind of give their feedback the first time with even, you know, opportunities, workshops, where people can come in and use the computers and put together their own maps. And so, we may have even exceeded what we had done the first time. I do want to just say some overarching comments, which is that, you know, really, we have five unique communities, and those unique communities are going to stay unique regardless of the map that we put together, because it's, you know, it's the folks and the community that make the difference. The things that everybody has named already that makes a difference, and why Cardiff is Cardiff, and Olivenhein is Olivenhein, and Lucadia is Lucadia, you know, that's not going to change with this map. This map is about how do we elect people to this council, and let's face it, it's 19 square miles of a town, 65,000 people, and so, the entire city is a community of interest with the rest of it. And so, I think that we ought not go down that slippery slope of making distinctions and trying to, you know, kind of divide ourselves in any way. This is really, you know, just a map that's going to, you know, show how people get elected to the city council, but we are the same city and the same communities after this. It's just, you know, how do we get elected? city and the same communities after this. It's just, you know, how do we get elected? But I think even once we have members elected to the city council, it's their job to focus on the issues of the entire city. Even though I'm representing District 4, New Encinitas and Olivenhein, I see my responsibility as representing everyone in the city and not just D4. And so I think that that's important to keep in mind, that this is something that should unite us and not in any way divide us or pit each other against each other. I agree with some of the comments that have been made so far, and maybe, maybe it's out of a sense of, you know, only three years ago, going through the mapping process and feeling like we did a really good job three years ago putting a map together. And I think that the maps and the input that we've received hence far really confirms that, that the core of what has been presented, the core of the feedback, is essentially, you know, what we've done, what we did three years ago. And so I think that I would take the same position as been, you know, espoused, advocated so far, which is that there should be small changes to the map. Let's face it, only three years ago, this map went into place, and people have now adjusted to the fact that, okay, this is what the district is for D1, D3, D4, and, you know, this is my council member. This is how it goes. We don't want to do any kind of significant changes. They're going to change that and confuse the voters and confuse our residents. And so I think small changes, in fact, you know, I want to, I would like to see a map come back, which is actually the same map that we have. And then perhaps even some ways of kind of getting that deviation down. Some people are talking about the northern portions of D3. How can we, how can we bring that northern portion down? I think that you, and we're only talking about like 200 people here, 300 people here. And so it's not, it's not a significant task. I would point us to page 69, which shows, I'm not sure who did this. I did not submit this map for the record. I don't know who submitted this map. But I would say that this is an attempt to make small changes to the current map, where you see that, page 69.
Does it have a map number? We'll pull it up for the audience.
Is there, is there any other way to identify these maps other than the page?
P69.
P69, 847. So in this one, we see that the D3's northern border comes down a bit. And then even like, I know that for D4, I didn't have, as I come down El Camino Real, on the southern portion of El Camino Real, there was a part of D3 that came into, came east of El Camino. And I see now it's actually given back to D4. So I think as a result, the deviation is down to a very, very reasonable level in this map. So this is a map that I would, in addition to the current map, this is a map that I would pull down, too. And then any other creative suggestions in terms of getting that deviation down, where you could basically give some of the population to D1, D2, and D4, I think that that would probably reduce confusion and make this task a bit more efficient here.
Okay.
Those are my comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Crans.
Yes, thank you. I did think it was kind of interesting that NDC created the three maps that I would scratch immediately. So I don't know if you wanted yourselves out of the game or not, but that's kind of how I'm feeling.
That might be success.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that first thing I would like to do is clarify something that came up in a conversation about districts in a strange place, and that was in our deliberations over who we should appoint to fill Jody Hubbard's seat. And I have great admiration for Councilmember Lines, but at the meeting that night, I did vote against her appointment. And I pointed out that she was in a part of District 3 that moved north. And I made a comment, something to the effect of, everybody knows why that district is shaped that way. And I kind of left it hanging. And so I learned a lesson in that that created some buzz where people filled in that everybody knows why part with whatever it is they were thinking on their own. So what I want to make clear is that the reason that map was adopted is so that all four council members that were going to be, you know, that were going to be districted were not in the same district. So that was the main part of that extension, was to put Councilmember Muir in a different district than the rest of us. And so we, none of us had to run against each other. And so, you know, Councilmember Muir is a very well-liked person, and I think, you know, he's great at representing his constituents. And it was not intended to gerrymander him out. It was intended to keep the four council members in separate districts. So I wanted to make that clarification at this particular point. I also was adamantly opposed to creating districts and lost that. So we ended up with districts, and I thought, you know, for the most part, they worked out okay. I have, over the years, heard complaints about the fact that District 1 extends over El Camino Real and picks up a piece of New Encinitas that kind of wishes they were with the rest of New Encinitas. So that's the one part of this that I think, you know, it's unfortunate that we only have four districts and we have five distinct communities, because that means that you have to carve up one of the districts for the most part. You know, if you're going to do this and try and maintain community boundaries, it's going to be one that gets divided, and it's turned out to be New Encinitas. And I unfortunately support that. So the districts that I think, the maps that we should continue to look at, 85964 and 65057. Now, 964 does not keep the community of Olivenhein together. So ultimately, we have to decide whether that southern, western part of Old Olivenhein on Manchester is enough of, you know, is Cardiff enough.
What is that, what is that last number that you said, 85964 and?
65057. And I think that, for me, like Councilmember Hensy, keeping those three districts on the coast is a good idea. As you know, I've advocated for keeping the communities, essentially the community boundaries that we use for council, excuse me, for planning commission appointments. You know, that map, I don't see overlaid on any of these. So it's not easy to necessarily identify what is happening to each of those communities. But, you know, some of these do a pretty good job of staying true to essentially, you know, a little bit south of Lucadia Boulevard over to Santa Fe, so that the three districts that are, have coastal, it's essentially a third, and it's divided in thirds. So I like that. And, but as much as I appreciate the efforts of Councilmember Lines, I think that D3 should be defined by Santa Fe Drive. So I think that that's the one correction that I would like to see made in this, in this current process, is that we establish that northernmost boundary of D3 to be Santa Fe Drive.
Okay. Are those the end of your comments, Councilmember Crans? Okay. Councilmember Lines?
Yes, thank you. So I just think this process was pretty interesting. It was fun. I can imagine how you did it a few years ago. Was it four or five now, maybe? I don't know how many years ago. And perhaps at the time, I thought, when I was looking at it from the outside, seeing how the districts were being created, I thought, oh, I don't understand that. But now that I've like, looked at how you could shake it out and do it different ways, I'm like, no. For instance, a single-coast district, it's just like, okay, that's interesting, but that's not who we are. And so this process has really helped me to respect the process that we made previously. And I do think history is important. I think our communities are important. I think I've, well, I've definitely gotten feedback from residents in Cardiff, and they've also submitted a written, from the town council, a written document. And I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of folks. And I understand how important the Cardiff community is to Cardiff, and based on the ZIP code, based on the school district, what our speakers have said. And I also understand that about Olivenhein. I understand that about Lucadia. I haven't heard from them myself. But we have some really cool history and some really cool communities. So I want to respect that as we move forward, when we craft our new, or we look at our new district boundaries. One thing I do want to say, though, kind of speaking to what Tony, Councilmember Crans was saying, is we were five and now we're four. So every community needs to take on more people and more geography. So the four of these districts, I mean, it just makes sense, needs to take on other people. I would really encourage us and challenge us not to disenfranchise the people we take into these districts, because we've got a whole group of people that used to be in New Encinitas that now are learning to call another district home. And I'd love for us to really embrace that and welcome them into their districts. So one of the things, let's see, I end up concluding that I would like to see some adjustments to our boundaries, but not any wholesale redos. My favorite two are 64774, which is on page.
Can you go slower now, 64?
Yep. 64774, which is on page 51, as far as the single.
Yeah, the pages are better for me.
Can you, can you pull up that on page 51 so we can all see it when she's talking about it?
And the reason I say that, there's a couple. One is this map, along with the one on page 69, which has already been mentioned as a favorite by Councilmember Hensy, really do try to keep the district boundaries intact. I think we could adjust a little bit. But, so it's not quite perfect. It's not quite there yet. I don't, I do want to look at keeping Cardiff intact. So I'm not intending to say that we do anything that breaks Cardiff up. But it's what additional property is most like the community of interest that Cardiff is. And I think we've captured that pretty well, as well as we can with what we've done in the past. I can see, though, and this is one comment I've gotten in the past, people who live north of Encinitas Boulevard in the current Cardiff district feel pretty remote as far as Cardiff is concerned. So right now, the Cardiff district, D3, goes all the way up to Villa Montoro in that area. You can see by the dash brown line. When you're north of Encinitas Boulevard, I think you get a little too far away from Cardiff. So if we're looking to consolidate and reduce D3, like on map 51, we could bring the, I would support bringing the boundary down to Encinitas Boulevard. One thing I'd like to request, and because it's, I think there's certain roads that are important. It was hard to find where Belour is on this map, and it's a boundary currently of the district. It might be helpful to label Belour.
Did you repeat that last part?
Label Belour. That's the street. And I just want to say, I really appreciate the other comments we've had tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Are those your comments, or?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I'll make some comments now, too. So, yeah, so we did, we did this in 2017, four years ago. And at that beginning time, there were a lot of different concepts. And one of them that I thought was an interesting idea was to have every coast, every district touch the coast, because then everybody would be bought into coastal issues and everybody would be bought into rural issues. And we looked through all these things that were radically different. And we rejected them for various reasons that I think were good. And I won't, you know, go into everything. But I do feel like the districts currently respect the historic communities, which are Cardiff and Olivenhein and Lucadia, and have created districts that surround those communities. So of course, it's really important that we recognize that Cardiff and Olivenhein don't have 15,000 people. So they have to pick up more residents somewhere. And so I agree with, I think, most of my colleagues and also the public speakers, saying that we should use a light hand, keep the districts similar to what they are, and make some small adjustments. I also think that it was a really good point, and I just want to emphasize it, that that minimizes changes to what the voters are currently experiencing with their elected officials. And it's always disruptive to move, to move around into different districts. So I think there's a benefit to having that stability as well. So I just had a couple of hearing from my colleagues about the things that they communicated. And I wanted to see if it was possible to do anything in real time, if we can pull up a map. I wanted to, to pull up the map that was referenced on page 69. So it's P69847. And, and then I wanted to accommodate the Morning Sun into D4 request. So is that done from this map? It is? Okay. It's hard for me to tell on this map where, maybe, well, exactly where it is, but it's in purple now. Okay, so it's in D4. Is it possible to, to change the Cardiff boundary for the District 3 seat, so move it down to Encinitas Boulevard? And I guess part of what I'm saying is that north of Encinitas Boulevard, I don't know if that, population-wise, is better into 1 or 2.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may clarify, I've pulled up the interactive viewer that is on the website that anybody can do, and we have all the maps loaded in. I actually, this tool doesn't allow me to make the real-time changes. I can focus in so we see where they are, make notes, and then come back to you, but I can't.
Okay. Okay, so we can do that at the next meeting.
Enables everybody to see what we're talking about. You're talking about Encinitas Boulevard here and this green to the north.
Right. Because I think Councilmember Lines made a great point about people north of Encinitas Boulevard, just it not seeming to be as connected to the District 3 at all. So if we can pull that line down to Encinitas Boulevard. And then the issue of the population balancing, I don't, I don't know which of the districts it would be more naturally go into, but I'd be open to my colleagues' thoughts on that particular question. And then also, if you could zoom, can you zoom out a little bit? I wanted to ask about what's happening at the very southern edge, so the San Alejo Lagoon. There aren't that many residents down there. And we just had a whole presentation on fire safety and Olivenhein and District 4. But also, you know, of course, Cardiff does bound the San Alejo Lagoon. You can walk into it. I don't know if anyone had a thought on whether that area should really be in District 3, the San Alejo Lagoon. And I mean, the line potentially, it would mean that District 3 person would represent both Miracosta and the San Alejo Lagoon Conservancy and potentially the Encinitas Country Day School, instead of that being represented by the representative in District 4. And so in some ways, I do think of the San Alejo Lagoon as being connected to Cardiff more than it is to Olivenhein, but I recognize the different ways that could be considered. So I just wanted to float that idea. And then if you could just zoom out a little bit, and I'll call on my colleagues to address these, a couple of things that I've noticed here. But, and I don't know if there's any other commentary on this map when it comes to the boundary around 1 and 2. So like, at Lucadia Boulevard, it cuts in a bit. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody feels that that works. So that was the other thing I just wanted to ask. So that's, so that's what I'd like to ask my colleagues and also ask the staff to come back with that modification. But maybe you can wait to hear what people's responses are to that. So Councilmember Lines, are you, did you put your name in? Okay, go ahead.
My name's still up, but I would say that I like your suggestion of the San Alejo Lagoon more representative of how the district was created. I think the more we can respect how we have moved forward over the last four years, the closer we can represent that. But also by reducing a little bit of population from District 3, I think would be the best way forward. So that would capture some of San Alejo Lagoon back. So that would capture some of Santa Lejos Lagoon back into D3. I don't think it's an area with a lot of population, is the thing.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But it would just be, when the Santa Lejos Lagoon is having an issue, and they're calling their district representative-
Right.
And, you know, the person who's sitting on the wastewater district that's in the Santa Lejos Lagoon right next to it, you know, to me, that's the kind of question. Okay, Councilmember Mosca, Deputy Mayor Mosca.
No, thank you. So I think that we, that I favored that, and we drew it that way, because three of the four districts actually touch the ocean. So this was the one way that I could actually touch a waterway, or anybody from Leavenhein would touch a waterway. So I continue to believe that what we did the first time was ingenious. And that district going down to the Santa Lejos Lagoon is perfect the way it is. And I also think that based on the fire analysis and analysis that we saw today, that Leavenhein and a rep from D4 has an interest in making sure they represent that area very well, since it's a waterway that comes through the community of Leavenhein. And again, we're a small town of 19,000, 19 square miles and 60,000 people. I think that we all have an interest in what's going on in the Santa Lejos Lagoon, the lagoon to the north of us, to the bluffs, to the rail corridor, to, you know, Rentosenife Road, to all of the various challenges facing the city. We are one city, and I think that we can all sufficiently represent. So I wouldn't change that. And then, just kind of looking at some of the other maps, I think map 51, if we're going to play with 69, we're going to just stay with 69 as a template. I'm fine with that. Although, the influence of 51 was to push D3 further into D4. And I don't like, I always thought that everything, I actually still tell people, everything essentially east of El Camino Real is D4. Because I do think that everything east of El Camino Real really shares a very, you know, they share a strong interest, a lot of things in common in terms of schools, the water district, the sanitation districts, a lot of things in common. So I would just say that if we're not going to change the northern border, that as we come down, or even if we change the northern border, and then we basically change the southern border, it's just kind of switching, swapping areas out. It's swapping the northern portions for the southern portion. And I'm not, I'm not keen on doing that, especially from the perspective of reducing confusion on voters.
Wait, can I just ask, are you saying what you don't like about 51 right now?
So I'm just saying that 69, if we're going to use it as a template, if any of the 51 stuff is bleeding into this, I'm just saying that, like, right now, how the D3 is coming across El Camino Real and grabbing parts of Willow Spring, I'm saying that's fine. But if, but I think that the impact of some positive comments about 51, which I'm positive about, because it's also, again, minimum changes, but I don't want to basically, the impact of 51, a positive 51, to basically mean that it's moving that eastern border of D3 into D4 any more than it already is. Because it's swapping different people, different groups of people from one end to the other. And I just think that that makes no sense. Just to basically save, like, this northern handle on D3. I just think that that doesn't make sense to me.
But can I just ask if, so, are you bringing up 51 in part because Councilmember Lyons did? Because, I mean, the border between 1 and 2 looks really much more jagged in this map. And then you just pointed out all these problems.
So if we stay with 69, and this is the template we're working with, then I'm fine. I'm just, I was just saying, if they're gonna, they're not gonna, if they're not reworking this in front of us, and they're going to bring it back, and they're looking at all the positive comments that was, that were made, I'm just saying that, you know, that why 51 makes sense and doesn't make sense to me. 69, how it's presented, I think is good. The only thing I wouldn't change, based on your comments, is I wouldn't, I wouldn't adjust the southern border of D4 and D3. I would leave the Santa Lejos Lagoon primarily within D4.
Okay. And the other thing, I'll just say, I'm going to call on Councilmember Hinsey next, but is that I would like to see the difference between 69, the 69 one and the current map. Because I think there possibly are neighborhoods or something that's changing that I don't, I'm just not keying in on. I don't know if it's possible to-
Do you mean the current district lines?
Yeah, I mean, so the current district lines are on here, right? Like, that's, so, so the biggest change between 69 and current is this, between 3 and 4, at the bottom, right? There's a big, there's a change right here around to the east of El Camino Real. And then, that, between 3 and 4, just down a little bit with your cursor.
Right here.
Yeah, that's the biggest change. And then, then that whole part around that panhandle, basically.
This is 51. I was just, if 51's never going to be used, it's fine. But what happens with 51? It goes even deeper, even more east. D3 goes even more east into D4, by swapping out the northern portions for the southern portions. And I'm just saying, I mean, essentially-
Put your mic off, please.
So you're just basically swapping one side for the other, and you're going deeper into the eastern portion of D4? So I'm-
May I clarify? You're saying you don't really support that, right?
No, I'm not saying I don't support 50. If you wanted to, if, it seems like that we're working off the template of 69. But if we brought 51 back, I'm fine with that. But all I'm just saying, I guess I'm giving some comments, because if the consultants aren't going to work on the fly here and put up another one, and they're going back, and they're going to basically draw one up, that I wouldn't want to have a situation where they draw one up that's being influenced on the, what I perceive as the negative parts of 51.
Okay. Councilmember Hinsey.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think after hearing the input and feedback from the community and my colleagues, I narrowed it down to 51 and 69. But a lot of the problems with 51 that Joe mentioned, and that there's panhandles from D1 into D2, I don't, I think that that's messy and that's confusing. And I do support D4 going all the way to the 5, because that's easy for people to understand, I think, when they're grouped with D4. And I appreciate your point that there should be some water, a body of water attached to it. So I do support D4 going all the way that far. It would be helpful if Leavenhein Town Council would give some input on that prior to our next meeting, so that we can understand exactly which maps are the preference to keep Leavenhein intact. Because I think that is a reasonable goal that we should strive for. And also, make sure that map 69 does incorporate the Morning Sun neighborhood and resolves that split. And I will say that, to Councilmember Krantz's point of, you know, appointing Joy to this seat and, you know, creating something just to keep her there, it is important to me that we are maintaining the goal of the continuity. And for Cardiff especially, they've had three different representatives in just a little bit, over three years. And so going into this, it was a goal to maintain the continuity of knowing who your representative is, having the accountability, being able to go to somebody who has taken the time to really delve into all the issues that surround that district. So it is important to me to maintain that continuity. So, yes, 69 was my preference, and I do support the comment that if, to rebalance and diminish the differences in total population number, we need to bring D3 down to Encinitas Boulevard. I can support that as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Krantz.
Yeah, so, again, I support trying to maintain community map lines as much as possible. Looking at 51, you know, talk about disenfranchisement there, you're dipping D2 into D3, into current D3, so you're disenfranchising people. And, you know, so, to me, the logical way to adjust the D3 is to remove that panhandle. And there's also, in this map 51, just kind of random, it looks somewhat random to me, adjustments between D3 and, or excuse me, D1 and D2, which, again, you know, if there's a good, solid reason for making some line adjustments, I'm supportive of it. But I'd rather not see the random changes. So, with that, I, you know, the maps that I suggested, the one that doesn't include D4 going down to the freeway or Manchester, I mean, the lagoon, get rid of that one. But the other one I thought was pretty close. And so that's where I'd prefer to go.
Do you want to weigh in on the question of Santa Lejos Lagoon in D3 or D4?
Again?
The Santa Lejos Lagoon in D3 or D4?
The Santa Lejos Lagoon, I think that D4 is where it should be. There should be a chunk of it in there, because there, indeed, you do get everybody with some coastal resource, you know, area. And, you know, but ultimately, I couldn't agree more with Joe. This is a pretty small city. It's ridiculous that we're doing districts. And so, you know, we frankly are spending, I think it said $150,000 for this process. We spent, you know, $100,000 last time. You know, we all need to be responsive to everybody in the city, you know? That's how I've always approached it. So, but when you get down to, we get to do, we have to do this every 10 years. And so my hope would be that we could, we could make those adjustments that respected community mapping as much as possible.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lyons.
So my colleagues have convinced me that 51 has a lot of weaknesses. So I'm withdrawing my support for 51. I mean, I was like, okay, okay. It's not good. I get, I see that. But 69, I think, is getting close. And as far as the lagoon, I just wanted to weigh in one more time. I think that the watershed is primarily in Leavenhein. The watershed is important to the health of the lagoon. I think it makes sense to me for some of the lagoon to be in Leavenhein, and then some of it in Cardiff.
Okay, well, there's consensus on that, then, from people. So, so I think, to direction moving forward, I mean, it seems to me like mostly it's the 69 with that map, that line adjustment to Encinitas Boulevard, to see what that does. And was there another specific, I don't, I don't think-
Take a look at Willow Springs, to make sure it's in, to take a look and be sure it's in District 4.
Morning Sun, yeah, that's already accomplished, apparently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It appears.
And, you know, you might draw the line to the west of DeGenio Middle School, so it's a little clearer there, so.
Can you be more specific of what you're saying? The line for, is that, are you saying to move DeGenio into a different district, or just make it-
Yeah, yeah, it would be, it would be in D4, but there's, there are no voters there. So it just would, on the map, make it pretty clear, you know, that that is, that District 1 is, you know, well short of Morning Sun. But either way-
Do you want to represent DeGenio anymore?
I'd love to represent DeGenio, but, and do, but they don't have any voters there. They're a little young.
So, so I don't, they might not know what, like, where specifically DeGenio is, but-
Well, it was right, it was right on the border of Morning Sun, so.
I think it's confusing. I think it's actually in D4.
Well, I was looking at Bruce's map, Bruce's drawing.
Down the post, it would basically-
Just follow the Leavenhein border, I think is the best way.
Is that what the border is?
No, but the Leavenhein border runs right there. If you do that, you'll match what you previously said you were-
I'm sorry, I forgot, we don't have, these are census tracts. So you don't have that liberty. So if you can get Morning Sun in D4, then that would be, I think, perfectly reasonable.
Sage knows where it is. She can help.
Well, look at it right here. So, so DeGenio is still in District 1, right here. And, but, but what about that census tract that just popped up? Oh, okay, there is no census tract right there that includes DeGenio. Oh, it's this huge census tract, 787.
And it just is the-
Okay. See it on there?
Yes.
So, Tony, your point's right. You see the houses along, in D1, right where the line splits? There are houses across the street in D1 that are still split, so I wasn't correct. If you want me, I can explain real quick.
Well, do you want to come up really quick? And so, does this current map on this page 69, which we're looking at right here, meet the goals that you were talking about in your public comment?
I just realized it did not. If you go, oh, Sage zoomed in, just like you were. That was perfect. So if you notice where the vertical split between the two colors are, you see the row of houses on the right? And you can see that it's a little shaded, but in the orange, the row of houses on the left. It's splitting Morning Sun still. I thought it had captured all of it. It had not. So to Tony's point about taking into account DeGenio Middle School, if there's a census tract overlay that would, does it have to be on census tract?
Yes.
Well, but, so, Morning Sun doesn't appear split to me. It's, that's all in purple. It's Springwood Lane that's split.
And that's part of Morning Sun development.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, they did say to us that we could make one, like, small adjustment to split a census tract. Were you suggesting that Springwood Lane would all be in purple? It would all be in District 4?
Right.
And Sun Vista Park, or, or some, who cares? I guess that doesn't matter. There's no homes there.
Yeah, exactly. I think if you could overlay the Leavenhein Commission boundary, or the traditional Leavenhein boundary, it would, it would put all of the Morning Sun tract, including all of Springwood Lane, in Leavenhein. That's all I was saying.
And what do we think about just that side of the street issue right there? Do you think we could do that to our demographers?
So we would, it would do a census block split. It's a small number of homes.
It looks like eight homes.
Yeah.
At least 25 people, give or take.
So it's probably, you know, what we've said all along is we try to avoid it, because the data is not precise once you split. But if we get a map that's pretty good, and we want to make one small split like that, that would be something we could draw for you.
Okay. I think that's a good idea. Because it does make sense to include that whole community together.
Well, and maybe not split it. Maybe, maybe there's a way to massage these numbers, to, not that I'm trying to give up voters. I'm going to pick up where I give up, right? But this particular section in the reddish hue with DeGenio, those are the folks that I don't think relate well to the communities of interest when it comes to the fact that most of D1 is Lucadia. So if there, you know, I think if there were one change, it would be for D1 to have less of the census blocks to the east of El Camino Real. I do like to go to El Camino Real.
So zoom out a little bit, so we can see what he's saying. So I think he's saying that that whole group that's 787, which, is that the population number? You're saying that-
And so all of that would go purple.
787 people would all go purple?
So then the boundary would be that, at the need of a person.
And I think that's poll line, that's the poll line easement there. But anyhow, I'd like to see that particular, and that part of D1 massaged a little bit with D4, because of the fact that D4 has all of Leavenhein and a big chunk of New Encinitas. And the New Encinitas folks want to kind of be with the New Encinitas folks. So as much as possible, that would be-
So I would just say that we need to look at this as a map. Because every single time you make one little change, or a major change, you're saying, which is getting back to the 51, and you're basically switching out, so you push that boundary, and then you're going to basically go 51, which is going to squeeze it on the, more south, D3, further east into D4. And I'm just saying that currently, D4 has a whole, has all of these folks that are east of Encinitas Boulevard, and they've been in that for four years now. And so just for the sake of moving this, because of what you've just said, would basically move that border even further east. And so I just, I, every move that you make, while it may make, while this may say, you could say, okay, you know, this, this makes more sense this way, this makes more sense this way. When the demographers come back, it's going to push borders in other ways that may not make sense. And so what I'm saying is that it's going to push it 51-like. It's going to push that northern border of D3 further east into D4, right? And so you're now just switching populations and switching groups. And if, if the whole point of it was to make small changes and not have disruption, to basically push that even further east, makes no sense to me by just swapping out the northern portions. But I do agree-
It's true. It does eliminate the light-hand aspect of what we were trying to do, yes.
But I do agree that, I do agree that if, in an ideal situation, that everything east of El Camino Real would be in D4. Because I think that it's all communities of interest. But I think that I just wouldn't, I wouldn't push that too far, that D1 border too far west, because then it's going to have a ripple effect of pushing D3 further into D4, the traditional map. I'm fine with, you know, the deviation in 69, trying to bring down that D3 kind of northern line. But I think that any, any kind of deep changing of that line is going to have other consequences. And so when you bring it back, I just, that's, from this council member, I'm saying that I don't favor that kind of pushing of the 51 into D4. So it's going like this, you're pushing like this. And that's not something I favor.
Okay. Let's try to move on to our next agenda items. Let's try to move on to our next agenda items. Okay? So, do you want to make another comment, Councilmember Lyons?
No, I was just going to say, I'm sorry, I think you're going to come back with several different options, given the input.
Given the input we've given you today, you're going to come back with several variations. I think I understood that to be your next step. Is that correct?
May I ask for clarification? May I ask for clarification?
Yes.
I would use as the base that map on page 69 that seems to be a universal base map that people like and make changes off of that map.
Right.
And I can do that absolutely.
And we will bring, say, two or three options based on 69, based on your discussion here, for your consideration.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So, on this, the recommendation is, you've closed the public hearing. We discussed this, the maps. You provided feedback, and we have what we need.
Yes, and I will close the public hearing officially with my trusty gavel. It's closed.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, and we look forward to the next meeting. So, thank you, everybody who came to watch this. I think we're going to need to take a quick break before we move on to the rest of the agenda items. So, we'll come back. Do you all want to come back at 8:00? Or do you want to just do a quick five-minute break?
Eight.
Eight? Okay. We'll be back at 8:00.
I've never seen that before, five-minute period. Or planning to. I just turned off my computer, hang on. Do you know everything east of the world is better?
And, Your Honor, I'm prepared to report out if you want to get that out of the way.
Yes.
All right. The council met in closed session on January 12th, and there were four items. One was conference with legal counsel on Moon versus City of Encinitas. The city council met with special counsel Mitch Dean on that item, and there is no reportable action following that discussion. The next one was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation on Worley versus City of Encinitas. The city council met with special counsel Mitch Dean on that item to discuss the status of that matter, and there is no reportable action on that item. The next one was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation on Davis versus City of Encinitas. The city council met with special counsel Mitch Dean to discuss that item, and there is no reportable action on that item. The fourth matter was conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation, initiation of litigation around Lahood Drive in Cardiff. And the city council discussed issues on that, and there are no reportable actions following that item. And that concludes my report out from the special closed session on January 12th.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're moving on to item 10B. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay. So, let's have a brief staff report.
Everyone's here. Okay, we're going to call this meeting back to order, everybody. So if you want to take your seats, we'll get started. We're returning to our agenda here. So because we had a timed certain item, we're going to go to, back to the consent calendar. But first, we're, we'll see if we have a report out from our city attorney from closed session. Or we can come back to that after consent, if you'd like.
Right, if we can come back, we did not have a closed session this evening, but I do intend to report out from a special city council closed session on three pieces of litigation, significant exposure that happened on January 12th. But if we can come back to that, I will report out on that.
Of course. So we have in front of us the consent calendar. Do we have any items pulled?
Sorry about that. There is no changes to the posted agenda and no items have been removed from the consent calendar by the public.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I will second that.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Oops.
Counselmember, there we go. Motion does carry unanimously, Sully.
The one thing I would like to say is a great, a significant thanks to staff for working through the Habitat for Humanity situation and that we now have two families in, in homes. And so I appreciate all the effort that went into that.
Thank you for recognizing that.
And Your Honor, I'm prepared to report out if you want to get that out of the way.
Yes.
All right. The council met in closed session on January 12th, and there were four items. One was conference with legal counsel on Moon versus City of Encinitas. The city council met with special counsel Mitch Dean on that item, and there is no reportable action following that discussion. The next one was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation on Worley versus City of Encinitas. The city council met with special counsel Mitch Dean on that item to discuss the status of that matter, and there's no reportable action on that item. The next one was conference with legal counsel, existing litigation on Davis versus City of Encinitas. City council met with special counsel Mitch Dean to discuss that item, and there's no reportable action on that item. The fourth matter was conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation, initiation of litigation around Lahoud Drive in Cardiff. And the city council discussed issues on that, and there are no reportable actions following that item. And that concludes my report out from the special closed session on January 12th.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to item 10B. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, so let's have a brief staff report.
Sorry, thank you. Before you tonight is the objective design standards. I'm Planning Manager Jennifer Gates, and we will breeze through this. So just for a little background, there are a number of state laws that have passed in recent years, including SB 35, our Housing Accountability Act, Housing Crisis Act, and then the amendments to the Housing Crisis Act that occurred in 2019. And all of these requirements have objective design standards required for any housing development of two or more units. So in April of 2021, in the housing element, we adopted Program 3B, and that identified that we would develop how, objective design standards to be implemented in the city. On August 25th, we presented to the Joint Planning Commission City Council at a study session on the status of those objective design standards, and then again presented any comments and recommendations that were presented at that meeting to the planning commission at a number of meetings in November and October. And then on December 16th, Planning Commission recommended approval of the draft city council ordinance and resolution that's before you tonight. So objective design standards involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official, and that is the main key element. So in the city, we have a number of ordinances that are in our zoning code or our municipal code, as well as our specific plans and on our design guidelines that are subjective. And so we were looking at modifying those to become objective. And as part of that study, we looked at a number of places. And in your draft ordinance before you tonight, we see Chapter 23.808 amendments, which is our section on design review. And that has added standards in the applicable sections. We also have amended Chapter 30.04, which is the definition section, and added definitions for what is a design guideline versus a design standard. And then also made amendments to Chapter 30.16, adding references to design standards and guidelines, as well as providing objective design standards for single-family housing development. This was identified by the planning commission as something that was needed. And this is a temporary fix, and that we will be looking at future modifications for single-family housing developments as well. We also did modifications to our specific plans, making sure that we included the words "objective standards" included in our city's design standards and guidelines, and that they would apply to all residential development, as well as mixed-use residential development. Also clarified that where conflicts in objective standards that occurred, that the objective design standards would be specified in the, that chapter would supersede and apply. And then if the specific plan is silent, then the city's design guidelines would then apply. So in the city's design guidelines, we've done a number of amendments that's seen in your resolution, attached to the resolution. And that includes information in the background section, the purpose, use, applicability, as well as amendments to the design review process. Also added standards within and throughout that document in the applicable sections. And then we also modified the existing guidelines to create standards where none existed in some of these sections. So if the city council does introduce the ordinance tonight, we will come back on February 9th for adoption, and then we'll submit to the California Coastal Commission soon after that. And the staff's recommendation tonight is to introduce the ordinance number 22-02, as well as to adopt resolution number 22-03. Just for clarification as well for timing, once the resolution is adopted, if it is adopted tonight, it immediately would go into effect. And that would be for all the design guidelines and standards that would be included in the document. And that concludes staff's presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the quick presentation. Let me just pull up the agenda here. Yes, Councilmember Lyons.
I think this is a really well put together document. I want to thank you and your staff and the planning commission for getting down in the weeds on this. So thank you, Jennifer. I, I am, I always feel like when we put together objective standards, we're tying people's hands a lot. It's kind of like a race to the bottom as far as quality of design. And as designers, we, we get sensitive to that because the creative processes usually has really good outcomes. But I understand the reason we're doing the objective standards is so that we can meet the expectation of what the state has asked us to do. And then the outcome being that we end up with projects that better meet our objectives and better blend with the character of our community and better achieve what we want to achieve. So I think, you know, I've watched the planning commission meeting. I've spoken with architects in the community just to get their, their feedback and, on this, because everyone's paying attention, this is important. And I think the general consensus is that this is a good job and a good step forward. So thank you. I, I do want to just make a point that this applies to the by right and the, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, this applies to by right and SB 35, and SB 9 and ministerial process. However, people can still, developers can still decide to go a discretionary process. Now, they might not, they might feel as though that's too time-consuming. But it is still an option, and they can, they can go that direction. And so I think it's good to be aware that that, that, that is still a valid way, way forward. So I will go ahead and, and put a motion forward to approve and the introduction and to adopt the resolution 2022-03.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote. Oh, do we have public comment?
There are no speakers on this item.
Okay, there is no public comment.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. We are on to our next item. This is the balloon item. And there's somebody in the front row with all his balloons, so I think that he's here for this item, item 10C. And how many public comments do we have on this?
We have eight.
Eight, okay. Let's go ahead and hear from staff and the environmental commission representative. Hello, Ari. Thank you, everyone, for waiting this long time.
All right. Here we go. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Deputy Mayor and City Council. So tonight, we're bringing forward to you a recommendation to introduce ordinance 2022-01. So it's referred to here as the balloon ordinance, adding Chapter 1130 to the Encinitas Municipal Code prohibiting the use, sale, and distribution of balloons filled with a gas lighter than air. So we'll provide a quick overview of the timeline, just real quick, get through it. Real, it started on September 16th, 2020, where city council approved a goal of the environmental commission's work plan to continue to identify and develop strategies to regulate plastic pollution sources, which may include balloons or Mylar products. It was on May 13th, 2021, the Environmental Commission Subcommittee presented a detailed report analyzing balloons as a source of plastic pollution and marine debris and a variety of related concerns. It was at that meeting that commission approved the approach recommended by the Subcommittee to develop an ordinance to prohibit the sale, use, distribution, and release of lighter-than-air, gas-filled balloons. Staff then went to work with legal counsel to develop draft ordinance language consistent with the commission's recommendations. And it was on October 14th, 2021, that the Environmental Commission approved the proposed ordinance, 2022-01, language for recommendation of the city council for introduction and for adoption. So prior to consideration by the Environmental Commission on October 14th, there was a pretty broad public engagement process. The, the draft balloon ordinance language was released for public review and comment on September 20th through October 8th. Socialized through the typical channels, there was a dedicated webpage established, email addresses. The ordinance language was presented to the Encinitas Business Associations, email notifications, newsletters, social media posts. There were direct mailings to identified stakeholders. When I say identified, they're identified in the commission's report. All of the local and corporate entities were sent direct mailings. And it was during that time as well that the city was in receipt of approximately 100 email letters of support at that time, before it went to the Environmental Commission on October 14th. So in terms of key provisions in the draft ordinance, it really is summarized as follows. So there's a provision to prohibit the use, sale, or distribution of any type of balloon that's inflated with a gas lighter than air. This provision applies to city facilities and city events. A provision defining proper disposal of inflated balloons and prohibiting the outdoor release of balloons. And there's also a specific provision excluding hot air balloons and balloons used in governmental or scientific research. So here we are, the recommended action tonight. So introducing, the recommended action is to introduce ordinance 2022-01. It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Encinitas, California, adding Chapter 11.30 to the Encinitas Municipal Code prohibiting the use, sale, and distribution of balloons filled with a gas lighter than air. So that concludes staff presentation. We're here for any questions. We also have Environmental Commission Chair Ari Novi here to help answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does, Ari, do you want to say anything at this point? No? Okay. Let me see, we don't have any council questions, so we'll go to the public comment.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. And our first speaker is Maya Luizy, followed by Teri Benin, followed by Mark O'Connor.
Progress is impossible without change, and those who cannot change their minds cannot change anything, quoted by George Bernard Shaw. Good evening, honorable council members and Mayor Blakespear. Thank you for the opportunity to show my opinion on the balloon ban this evening. My name is Maya Luizy. I'm here to express my support for this ban. It has come to my attention that a lot of people disagree with this. However, I agree. I think balloons should be banned from Encinitas because they are harming marine life and they are not healthy for our environment. Sometimes people just let balloons go into the air to remember those who have died, but they never get the idea that it's bad for our environment. There are so many events that balloons are used at. For example, on a Thursday at Disneyland, 1 million balloons were released into the atmosphere, causing balloons to once again pollute our oceans even more. I have seen that people just release balloons as a celebration or just get, or just to get a little amount of content on YouTube. We already know that plastic bags, plastic forks, and spoons, even plastic water bottles, are causing so many problems today. We don't need any more problems to deal with. There's a moment where you have to choose whether to be silent or stand up, Malala once said. Stand up for marine life, stand up for this ban, stand up for yourself. There's always a time, that time is now. Thank you.
Teri?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Teri Benin. I'm the district team leader for Party City retail locations in California, including the Encinitas store. As part of Encinitas retail community for over 25 years, with its 16 employees currently, that increases to over 40 during our peak seasonal time, Party City is committed to creating joy in a sustainable way. We share the priority of the environmental responsibility and recognize the good intentions behind banning helium balloons, but believe this resolution will negatively affect retailers and may not be supported by your consumer constituents. In fact, customers have purchased a record level during our COVID pandemic. Balloons have never been more popular with Encinitas residents, as we saw nearly 20% increase in sales in 2020 and over 40% increase most recently in 2021. As this translates to approximately 365,000 balloons annually, we know that balloons are an important component of Encinitas celebrations and that the majority of them are properly handled and disposed of. Why do we give helium balloons to children for birthdays? Because they create joy, even more so during a pandemic. And they are an affordable way to make a celebration special. The economic impact of banning helium-filled balloon sales would be devastating to our Encinitas store and business, would have significant impact with a loss of revenue, sales, on additional products, and jobs. Party City supports laws that limit the intentional release of balloons and believes there are reasonable measures that allow people to continue to responsibly enjoy helium-filled balloons without necessitating a ban. We're engaged in a comprehensive consumer education program, including online and storefront education, labeling balloons and packaging with guidance not to release them into the environment, and providing point-of-sale information to customers on responsible balloon usage and disposal. We provide free balloon rates, weights with the purchase of helium-filled balloons, and encourage the reuse of our foil balloons after proper deflation. We are also piloting a balloon recycle program for consumers to return deflated balloons purchased anywhere to our stores, including Encinitas. We know these efforts are making a difference. Unlike the cigarette butts, plastic food wrappers, and plastic bottles, balloons have not been mentioned in any top 10 lists for beach cleanups, including nine years of studies from 2013 to 2021 from the official source of the U.S. National Marine Debris Monitoring Program, and studies in 2021 from Surf Rider, a nonprofit organization dedicated to the protection of ocean and beaches. Respectfully, we ask that you not support ordinance 2022-01, specifically adding Chapter 11.30 to the Encinitas Municipal Code, and instead join us in exploring alternatives by promoting education for responsible balloon enjoyment to protect the environment. I thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Next speaker is Mark O'Connor, followed by Treb Heining, followed by Dana Criggins.
Hello, Mayor Blakespear and council members. My name is Mark O'Connor. I'm an Encinitas resident, volunteer with Surf Rider San Diego's Rise Above Plastic Committee. Our committee decided to, due to public health concerns, that we were not going to bring supporters into the chamber tonight. We asked them to email you instead their support, and I assume that they've done that in great numbers. County balloon collection data to be, is pre-pandemic due to closed beaches and no group activity. So in 2019, data locally for this county is 3,173 balloons were recovered. Many people collect balloons, and they don't report them, so that number is very low. The most recent cleanup data was 2021 coastal cleanup day in September. It was individual cleanups led by I Love a Clean San Diego, and during that event, 239 balloons were recovered. I brought my personal collection of over 180 Mylar and latex balloons recovered between Swamis and Beacons. Most recently, I added one Mylar and one latex balloon while working with the Nature Collective. They're the former Santa La Hijo Lagoon Conservancy, who is now protecting not only the lagoon, but our marine-protected area. And during that low tide event is when I gathered those last two balloons in my collection. And our marine-protected environment is something that's precious, being studied by scientists as we try to keep its human use down. No fishing, commercial fishing, or lobstering. It's a very special part of our community. There's a state law on the books making a misdemeanor intentionally release Mylar balloons. Stores have to counterweight the balloon at the point of sale, keep them from plying away, and there's fine print on the balloon now that says, please do not release this balloon. These are not working as by the amount of balloons that we are recovering. I mentioned supporters who have emailed you. In addition, Seiko Ruda, UC Irvine Research Assistant in Borrego Springs, is finding balloons out in our local mountains and deserts. He created a petition to be signed for supporters. We're 7,753 supporters from around the world, the nation, the state, and locally 90 had zip codes from Encinitas. Surf Riders also reached out to local environmental nonprofits asking for support, and all have agreed Surf Rider, Wild Coast, Coast Keeper, Autobahn Society San Diego, Sierra Club San Diego, Oceana, Solana Center for Environmental Innovation, Changing Tides Foundation, The Nature Collective, our East County partner found Anza Borrego Desert History Association, Anza Borrego Foundation, the Chaparral Lands Conservancy, Project O, Invasive Weed Task Force, Tub Canyon Desert Conservancy, Steel Bernard, Anza Borrego Desert Research Center, and the Tortoise Group. This is to show you that you are not alone. You have thousands of people out there, and all these nonprofits that are going to support banning of the sale of balloons. And I thank you for your And I thank you for your time and ask you to vote yes on this measure. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. My name is Trev Heining. I'm here tonight to oppose the balloon ban. And thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members of Encinitas. My life work has been balloons, 53 years now. I started as a balloon vendor at 15 years old, went through college as a music major and learned how to tie balloons fast, had some ideas about putting them in clusters, and I'm the guy that invented balloon columns and balloon arches and pioneered the balloon decorating industry throughout the world. I now have five corporations on three different continents, and so I'm very much aware of everything about balloons, about helium, and everything that goes about it. And I will say that this proposal is based on a lot of things that have been exaggerated. It started in 1987 when facts started to be misconstrued about the balloon industry. The internet has carried that on even further. And we live in a world now where there's no due process. If it's on the internet, it's a fact, and that's it, and we have to live with it. But that's not true. I'm here to tell you some of the truths tonight. Here's four top ones. Latex balloons are 100% biodegradable. If you say they are not, you're very ignorant because you cannot stop a latex balloon from biodegrading at all. Okay? Number two, my friends here are not single-use plastics, okay? They're very offended by that, okay? And they also are offended by being eliminated from the city of Encinitas in a balloon ban, all right? They're two weeks inflated already. They're enjoyed by children of all ages, from 3 to 93, and after two weeks, they'll go for another two weeks, and then they can get a booster and go for another month. So they're far from being a single-use plastic, okay? The world is not running out of helium, an internet lie, okay? Our supplies in the United States were dwindling a few years ago, and we supplied the world helium. Everybody around the world had their feet up on their desk in terms of helium. What happened at the same time? Flat-screen TVs, MRIs, the very addictive pacifiers you have by your elbows there were all made with use of helium, okay? What happened when our supply started to dwindle? People started exploring for helium. More helium has been discovered in the last 10 years than the past 50. Huge plant just opened in Russia, joint venture between Japan and Russia. It will supply the country of Japan 500 times the amount of helium they currently use. In a couple of years, there will be a glut again of helium on the market, okay? Education is the key. Education, education, education. It was mentioned in the Environmental Committee that I was at the other night, education isn't working. Education always works, the same way when we had seat belts put in cars. I remember that. Who remembers that? Okay? Nobody wanted to wear them in the beginning. Education, education. Surf, you know, the paddleboards off our coast here, people were falling off and drowning, all right? That was a big problem because they didn't have life vests on. Education, okay? We didn't ban them, okay? Some of the things that are misstated in your proposal is that balloons are the second most dangerous item on the oceans. Can I have another minute? If I just, I'm cleaning.
Okay, we'll give you a minute. If you're the world expert in balloons, you came all the way here to our city, I'll give you a minute.
And it's my birthday, and I had to postpone my plans. My grandchildren are very upset.
And you've been here for hours with your friends. I know. Okay. One more minute for him.
They say they're frequently mistaken by birds, mammals, and marine life as food. That's not a true statement. That's too broad. There might be some. It's a very rare case where an animal ingests a balloon or something like that, but it's not all animals, not all marine life, not all birds, okay? Great study done by Peter Lutz at the University of Miami in the late 80s on the loggerhead turtles, gentle giants of the ocean, okay? Because we grew up, when we were doing balloon releases back in the 60s, 70s, 80s, they were done all over the world, you know? There was a big one in Anaheim that I did one time for Disneyland, okay? And the fact of the matter was is that it was going out then to children that if you release a latex balloon, these do not have ribbons on them, it will go into the ocean, a turtle will eat it, and it will die. That's what we heard. It was fact. It's being taught to children right now. All right. Peter Lutz, esteemed biologist down at the University of Miami, did a test on sea turtles in captivity. You can imagine, there was like eight or 12 of them in a tank, fed them latex balloons. Some of the turtles ate the balloons, some did not, no matter how hungry they got. All the turtles that ate the balloons passed through their systems without harming them, okay? So these are some of the studies I'd like to share with you if we had a study session. We are all wanting the same thing. Mark and I talked earlier tonight. We want clean beaches. I am a biker. I live on the Newport Back Bay. I'm a birder.
Sir, we're going to have to wrap it up here.
So do not eliminate the joy, happiness, and awe that balloons create, because the actions of a few should not dictate the actions for many that enjoy it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dana, did you want to speak or you just wanted to register your support?
I want to register my support.
You didn't want to speak though, correct? Okay. The next speaker is Ryan Allen, and then June Hansberger.
Hello. My name is Ryan Elaine, and I'm the manager of State and Local Government Affairs with the California Retailers Association, the only statewide trade association representing all aspects of the retail industry. I am here today to speak in opposition of Agenda Item 10C, the proposed ordinance prohibiting the sale, distribution, and even use of lighter-than-air balloons here in Encinitas. To put it simply, general bans like this one proposed do not work, nor do they result in the intended outcomes. And the enforceability of this ordinance is questionable at best. And those who really want balloons will be able to go to a nearby city and purchase it, causing Encinitas to lose out on tax revenue as well. The ban will cause a significant economic impact to local retailers, small businesses in Encinitas and surrounding communities. You don't have to look far to see who is threatened by this ordinance: florists, local retailers, balloon decorators and twisters, and event planners. In other words, our neighbors. These businesses, including minority-owned small businesses, are already struggling after the COVID-19 pandemic, and placing this ordinance on these businesses will only add additional hardships and have devastating impacts. A more impactful solution as opposed to an outright ban would be an educational campaign, as was just previously mentioned, of the harms caused by littering with balloons. And we already have state laws that prohibit balloon release and require a weight to be affixed to a string to prevent it from flying away. So instead of banning lighter-than-air balloons, the city should tap into the environmentally unconscious citizenry and promote how to safely enjoy happiness that balloons bring. We can all agree that keeping our oceans and beaches clean is important. In environmentally sensitive areas like beaches, we accept restrictions on cigarettes and glass bottles due to the harms that they pose. If the city does not believe that an educational campaign regarding the proper use of balloons goes far enough, our members are prepared to accept a similar restriction to balloons specifically limited to beaches as a tangible and sensible alternative to an outright citywide ban. Our members take environmental responsibility seriously. They are piloting balloon take-back programs right here in Encinitas and have invested heavily into research and development to further advance our sustainability goals. And it is important to note that latex is biodegradable, as was previously mentioned. And furthermore, I'd like to clarify a few things with the helium used in balloons, that this is not the same helium that is used in medical grade or scientific studies. It's just simply not pure enough. And over 80, globally, the most global helium use, over 85%, is used for other things than balloon inflation. And an 18-inch balloon only needs about 0.1 ounce of gas. So respectfully, we ask that the City Council please work with businesses in the community to create solutions that protect our environment without placing overbearing hardships on them. Thank you.
June?
Sorry, I thought somebody was after me. I have a presentation. Are we able to pull that up? Sorry. I just need my slides. I have a PowerPoint presentation, is what I'm saying?
I don't have that.
Okay, I emailed it to the help desk. 10C, I got a confirmation. Hi, I'm June Hansberger.
Wait, do you want to wait and see?
I do, I do. I just thought I'd introduce myself. Hi, I'm June Hansberger. It's nice to see you this evening. I was part of the Environmental Commission in 2021 when this ordinance was first proposed.
Well, why don't we see if there's another public speaker while they look under the help desk?
We don't have another public speaker, but we do have Tom Remy, registered opposition but does not wish to speak. And then Dana Criggins, registered support for the recommended action but does not wish to speak.
Sorry, I was just saying you don't have it. Do you want me to forward you the help slip or?
Yeah, if you want to forward it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Perfect. You guys found it. That's great.
Perfect. Thank you. I so appreciate it. Good evening. I'm June Hansberger. I was with the Environmental Commission when we first started working on this. Yes, thank you. So a couple of things. Although balloons appear to float away into space, no matter where you release them, they always come back down. And with our air currents, a lot of times they are coming to the beach, but they also do end up in the desert. The problem is that lighter-than-air balloons pose safety threats to animals, humans, and the environment. Balloon litter is found at our parks, our beaches, our oceans, and our neighborhoods. Balloons decompose into microplastics. Animals ingest balloons and become entangled in their ribbons, and Mylar balloons cause power outages and cause fires. And helium is a finite resource. So first off, balloon litter. Lighter-than-air balloons are found decomposing at our parks, beaches, oceans, and neighborhoods. Surf Rider volunteers recovered 1,375 balloons and pieces from local beaches in 2019. These balloons deteriorate into microplastics, which are pieces that are less than 5 millimeters that find their way into our oceans, our drinking water, our food, and even the air we breathe. The number of balloons and balloon pieces on our beaches has tripled in the past 10 years. Balloons also kill animals. They are often mistaken for food. There's pictures showing them in the stomachs of animals here. When they are ingested, they block the animal's digestive tract and prevent it from absorbing nutrients, which cause animals to slowly starve. Balloon strings and ribbons are also deadly, and animals can become entangled and injured, impacting their ability to move or eat. Some other hazards of Mylar balloons is that in the last five years, Mylar balloons have caused more than 500 power outages across San Diego when they have come in contact with power lines. Helium is also a finite resource, and it is predicted to run out in 25 years. We do use it for many other things, from MRIs, computer chips, and fiber optics, so it is a very important resource. I realize that there are many alternatives to filling balloons with helium. You can fill them with just regular air. There are eight retailers in Encinitas that sell lighter-than-air-filled-only balloons, but designers have created air-only-filled designs that include arches, bouquets, and hanging arrangements. So we feel, or we hope, that increased sales of these air-only-filled designs can offset the loss of revenue from lighter-than-air balloons and provide an alternative and a viable place for other balloons and to continue to provide joy for kids. So the problem really is that the lighter-than-air balloons pose threats to animals and humans and the environment, and the solution here is to just vote yes and to please help with this microplastic and plastic problem. Thank you very much.
Okay. That was an enthusiastic clapping there. Okay, I just want to make sure that our Environmental Commission Chair, who came all the way to this meeting at 8:45, doesn't want to say anything. You don't have to, but just want to make sure you can't, no.
If you have any questions, I can answer them, but I think everything that needs to be said has been said. Let me just very quickly thank June Hansberger and the other environmental commissioners who were involved in this. I was not so much directly, although I did vote yes in our commission meeting, but it was Joan, Engie Biskoner, and Katie Kramer did a lot of hard work on this, and I want to applaud them. And of course, the city has such a wonderful track record on eliminating plastic pollution, and so thank you so much for considering this.
Well, thank you. Our Environmental Commission is really a leader and bumps up a lot of great stuff to us on the City Council, and I'm happy that we're considering yet another thing, which I'll say that I absolutely support. So I think June made all of the points in her PowerPoint, that balloon litter is everywhere, it breaks down into microplastics. We see them in a big container here, which Mark brought, and it's really a threat to our wildlife, to humans, to our marine environment, to the desert. And I'm sorry about the transition for your business that you're going to need to make in the city of Encinitas, but I appreciate you coming out to speak to us about your perspective. I think we need to be reducing plastics in every possible way, and the more that we chip away at it, the more sustainable our world becomes. And I'll just say that I think joy is created in a lot of different ways, and humans will always find ways to create joy because it's part of the core of being a human. And so we don't need to have plastics to do that. And so I understand there's maybe a sentimental loss for some around this, but it's something that I wholeheartedly support, and I'm grateful to our Environmental Commission and to all the many people who have come out to speak about it. We have literally received hundreds of emails on both sides, most of them in the last 48 hours, but it's clearly a hot topic of general interest. So with that, I will call on my colleagues. Councilmember Lyons.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment. I enjoyed spending a couple hours of time with Mark Connor, who spoke earlier at the I Love San Diego Cleanup, and we just happened to be partnered together. He found me out there. So I had two hours of learning about balloons and this topic, and that was really valuable to me, so I appreciated his insights on that. And I'm always sensitive to the cost to businesses, and I'm happy to hear that not only had that been presented to the Environmental Commission and integrated into the thought process before it came to us, but I'm also hearing today again from June Hansberger too, that the air-filled balloons are an option, and I just think they're an amazing option. So I'm hoping that the business can adapt and that there would be no loss of business. So I'll go ahead and move to approve this item.
I'll second it. Councilmember Mosca.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, you know, clearly there's an environmental impact, and I think that the Environmental Commission has done a good job in highlighting the alternatives, not only here in Encinitas but in other cities surrounding Encinitas. And the ordinance that you put together is really nicely kind of, you know, focused on what the solution is, what the problem is and what the solution is, and so I think it's a solid ordinance. To the point that I think that one of the commenters made, which is that, well, if you ban it, cities around you are going to also, they're going to allow it for sale. So, you know, you're really not doing anything. You're not being as effective. You're just kind of denying your residents this purchase. I'd say that the track record of Encinitas is that we're leading. We're leading. We're doing what is right, especially as a coastal community. We're doing what's right, and we lead and other people are following. And so I think that when we basically stand up and say, you know, we speak from our values and speak about what is right, others will basically take note, and they'll say, yeah, that's something that we should be doing as well. And so hopefully, when Encinitas leads, others follow, and others in the surrounding areas will do the same. So I support this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowns.
Yes, thank you. And I would like to thank Mark O'Connor for his efforts in this. I spent some time talking with him a little bit at the Environmental Festival at Cottonwood Creek Park, and at that time, he was not a environmental commissioner. He was just an activist, a member of Surf Rider, and has put in a lot of effort on this. He's a Class of '75 from San Diego.
filled with lighter-than-air, you might be able to come up with some legs that if you just filled it with air, you could still have a unicorn. And I would encourage you to do that because I know kids love unicorns. I have, in fact, had to deal with the trauma of my granddaughter losing her helium balloon as it went up. And it's, it's a traumatic event for them. And the joy that they get from these things are, you know, obvious. So, I'm going to work with her to try and get her joy from air-filled balloons. I think we cut the ribbon down on the Coastal Rail Trail, and there was an arc of just air-filled balloons that went over that. And I think that that use of air-filled balloons is something that I would encourage people to do and dispose of it property, properly. I think that's the key. Some people think nothing of littering, and unfortunately, all of the bans, all of the requirements for weighted this and that, it, there's unfortunately a group of people who ignore that. So, and again, unfortunately, we have to adopt some ordinances that are geared to those people, not the significant percentage who follow the rules and are much more conscientious about not littering. So, I will be with the motion makers on this, and I again thank the Environmental Commission for their efforts.
I'll just say that things have transitioned from that time when we walked underneath the balloon arch. When we just were having our press conference about Lucadia Streetscape, our city staff did not go get balloons to create balloon plastic, but got some sort of like balls.
Rubber balls.
Yes, rubber balls.
On sticks.
On sticks, right. They fell down a little bit during.
Yes. I think Kelly got out a sledgehammer, and she was trying to put it back in there.
But you see that, yeah, there are ways to have joy at press conferences, even without the balloons. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hensy.
Thank you. Yeah, just to add the thanks to Mark, who's my neighbor, and he cleans up the beaches before I wake up in the morning, so I get to enjoy clean beaches. And I'm just so proud to be from Encinitas. Like, this is part of our culture that we're, we are leading. And I was a junior docent at the lagoon growing up as a little kid, and it would just bother us so much to see the balloons and the styrofoam and the straws. And it's so pleasing that now as an adult, there are fewer straws on our, plastic straws on our beaches, and there's so much less styrofoam than there was when I was growing up. And the last thing is the balloons. And I know that the latex might biodegrade, but also, it's the strings that get all wound up in our seaweed. It almost feels like my duty, if I'm on this beachwalk, I got to sit down and untangle it, and sometimes it takes a really long time. But, yeah, so appreciative to Ms. Hansberger, who was my earthspace teacher in ninth grade, that she's still fighting the good fight and teaching the young ones about what to stand up for. And I just think it's quite telling that our youngest speaker of the night was here talking about this item because it's, it's so galvanizing to the young generation to know that they can make these kind of changes. So, I'm happy to vote yes and join my colleagues in what sounds like will be a unanimous vote and continue to keep our beaches in even better condition than maybe our forefathers got to experience. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. So, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so now we're on to our two councilmember-initiated items, the item number 12. The first one is from Councilmember Crans, and I will turn it over to you to handle this. Councilmember Crans.
Okay, thank you. I would like to introduce this item by talking a little bit about how I came to learn about the initiative. Last summer, about, I think it was in June or so, I participated in a Zoom session that included a conversation with Council, or excuse me, Assemblymember Tasha Berner-Horvath about SB 9. And the group was called CAL-E, California Alliance of Local Electeds. And it was a good-sized crowd. In fact, I think Mayor Blakesburg, you were on that Zoom, as well as Councilmember Lyons. And that got me invited to those weekend sessions, Zoom sessions. And I have been attending fairly regularly, and that's where I first learned about this initiative. And it was spearheaded by Mayor Bill Brand of Redondo Beach. And what this measure would do is it would create a constitutional amendment that specified land use matters to be municipal affairs. And so, many of the state laws that have to do with density bonus and housing element and SB 9, for example, would no longer be applicable to local jurisdictions. So, I've been at this now for almost 10 full years, and some of the more difficult issues that I've had to deal with relate to land use matters. And I think that it's critical that as a city, we retain local control over land use issues. And it seems that most often, when there is significant opposition, it is related to something that was imposed upon the city by the state. So, for example, the state just recently passed SB 9. And in order to implement that, we had to adopt an urgency ordinance because the state decided in a fairly heavy-handed way that it was going to become effective at the first of the year. And we have processes where we use the Planning Commission to normally develop an approach to various laws and especially to land use issues. There was no time for that. So, we are now having to rush that through under this currently, this urgency ordinance period. So SB 9, that has had a significant impact, if only because now we've got a lot of people in the community that are fairly concerned about the impacts that that will have. SB 330, no net loss provisions, among many other things, have created some very difficult circumstances for trying to keep our housing element current. Once again, many aspects of SB 330, in my opinion, are heavy-handed and impose regulations on local jurisdictions that actually know better about how things should work here in our own community. Density bonus law, that's another one that has just vexed the city forever. And just one simple example of how it has just kind of morphed into this, you know, crazy bit of legislation is that we currently calculate the density of a project using gross acreage, which includes property to the center of the street. And that's just one small example of ways that I think the density bonus law has created an environment where the public is just losing, you know, the council and legislature are losing credibility over things like this. So, for me, as we were going along and talking about the initiative and the effects that it would have on the city of Encinitas, I thought on balance, it was going to be good for our community. Some have interpreted it to mean that I am not going to be, that this will relieve us of our obligation to find ways to increase affordable housing in our community, and nothing, in my opinion, could be further from the truth. It does put more pressure on the City Council to make the decisions locally and to lead on the issue of affordable housing. And I think that is where it belongs, right here in our local jurisdiction. And I think that instead of serving in a way that we just shrug our shoulders and say our hands are tied by Sacramento, what we should be doing is leading by example here in Encinitas. And so, I submitted this petition, or excuse me, this resolution for support on this initiative. And I think that many in our community would appreciate if we did what we have done over the years past, which is always advocate for local control. So, that's where this resolution came from. I included some legal analysis of the initiative. There's some information on the flyer about some of the things that it would do that is in the staff report, and I welcome a conversation about this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crans. I don't see any hands raised for questions from the council, so let's go to the public speakers.
We do have six. Our first speakers are Bob Ayers, Teresa Bochum, Bruce Ayers.
And it's with some regret that I'm here to oppose this resolution. It's regret because I have great respect for Tony Crans, who I've known since I was this tall, and I think he's been a wonderful representative of our city, always brings a different perspective. But I disagree with him here, and I want to tell you why. My name is Bob Ayers. I grew up and still live within the glorious shiny walls of Encinitas, our castle on the coast. Nobody will deny that there is a tall, thick wall around our city created by generations of powerful economic forces. It's really nice to be inside the wall, isn't it? It's really nice. But if you're not already inside, it's very hard to get through the gate, and it's getting harder. There are a lot of people who want to get through the gate, and we talk about a wish to have them here. We enthusiastically shout yes to having our medical providers, our teachers, our people of color. Our frontline workers live within our walls. But the unspoken fact is that most of us really don't want to open the gate. We like it the way it is. We want to protect what we have. We declare, of course, we need more affordable housing, but not if it increases our traffic or blocks our views. We're pretty stubborn about it. That's why it's taken so long, and that's why it's become important, more and more important all the time. It's human nature to protect what you have. The desire for protection transcends political parties and economic lines and the color of our skin. Most simply, it's about the haves and the have-nots. We have in the city a very vocal and well-organized group of haves. Good for them that by timing, wealth, or inheritance, they have made their way inside our castle walls. The reality is that housing is not an issue that affects only our council. There are a lot of people outside of the walls wanting in. There are many stakeholders and complicated laws addressing this issue. Our elected officials in Sacramento just passed controversial laws. The laws made by the people outside of our walls feel like an invasion, but they are stakeholders too. We should make our own decisions about this. We who have will deal with those who have not. That makes no sense to me. So now, we have this neatly packaged initiative to put control of the gate to those who are already inside the gate. It's an initiative about control of the gate, even though it's dressed up with great words about BIPOC support and lawmakers don't care about, as developers are in it only for themselves. It's tripartisan, but to me, these promotional points miss the point. Show me the group of have-nots who support this initiative. They don't support it. They want in, and they'll take support from any resource they can have. They don't care if it comes from the state, from the federal government, from you. You can all vote any way you want to. You can fill out a petition at the grocery store. You can even vote for the initiative if it gets on the ballot. But as a city council, don't slam the door on the people you've been trying to help for so many years. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, like Bobby, I have great respect for Councilman Crans, and he and I've had some email exchanges, very thoughtful, respectful exchanges with Councilman Crans, and I'm so grateful for him and all his service. And again, like my husband, I, I'm sorry to be on the other side of this one from Tony. "Thank you all for your service and dedicated efforts to address the affordable housing crisis. I'm a 33-year resident of Encinitas and have the good fortune of being a homeowner because my husband purchased properties in the 80s before the cost of land became prohibitive for my family, which it would be now. I believe this housing opportunity, I believe that housing opportunity matters for our low, lower-income neighbors and oppose this resolution. The results of this voter initiative will make our current homeownership divide worse because it prevents the state from acting if local land use policy precludes housing development at lower-income levels. I well understand the flaws of state laws, as you do and many of us here, and the need for their correction. However, we cannot forget that our state leaders come with experience and wisdom gained when they served in local government. At the same time, our local government has not been capable of managing our affordable housing crisis alone. Between the years 2013 and 2020, 1,043 Encinitas residents needed low-income housing, and only 93 low-income housing units were built. I don't see this initiative presenting solutions to the deficit of affordable housing for California coastal cities like Encinitas. Instead of continuing to push back against the state, let's work together to create and build the best-designed affordable housing communities that fit the demands of Encinitas residents and commuters who want to live where they work. Facing the housing crisis requires the political will of residents, local, state, and federal government to find creative solutions. Many of my friends, family, medical staff, teachers, and artists have had to leave Encinitas due to the cost of housing. I request that you oppose this voter initiative because it will restrict housing opportunities for Encinitas residents who are the true backbone of the character of our city. Thank you."
Following Bruce is Molly Woods, Tashi McMillan, and then Julie Thunder.
Hello, Bruce Ayers, Leavenheim. Tony, I want to thank you for bringing this and agendizing this. I strongly support it. I've been a member of Livable California and the group. I've been on many of the CAL-E calls you describe, and I'll get into that a little bit. I've also obviously been on the Housing Element Task Force, been dealing with our housing element for quite a while, and of course, Planning Commission Chair. But before that, I was also the original author of Prop A, which is really local control, and that's what we're talking about here. I think even the people supporting or opposing this said, "Most of us," quote, "most of us don't want to open the gate." They're telling you what your constituents want. The people that vote for you want this adopted. Go talk to most of the people. The surveys that CAL-E is showing is 75% support for this kind of action, 75% opposition to SB 8, 9, and 10. Do not underestimate that. It's important. So, I'm going to go, and one of the CAL-E, I thought it was quite telling, one of the CAL-E town halls was with Baldwin Hills, south, central LA, and they were very much opposed to SB 8, 9, and 10. The homeowners in that area have felt like they've recovered their, their community. And I'm talking about the outside, the have-nots, if you will, although they feel they have what they have in their home neighborhoods and they like it, and they want local control. So statewide, this is, this is an important issue. And I think you'll find that statewide, it is quite well-supported too. So, obviously, I'm collecting signatures, along with quite a few other people. One of the things I like about this is it would prevent the state from overriding local initiatives such as Prop A, or Encinitas' right to vote on upzoning. And so-
I've been on many of the Cal E calls you describe, and I'll get into that a little bit. I've also obviously been on the Housing Element Task Force, been dealing with our housing element for quite a while, and of course, Planning Commission Chair. But before that, I was also the original author of Prop A, which is really local control, and that's what we're talking about here. I think even the people supporting or opposing this said, "Most of us," quote, "most of us don't want to open the gate." They're telling you what your constituents want. The people that vote for you want this adopted. Go talk to most of the people. The surveys that Cal E is showing is 75% support for this kind of action, the 75% opposition to SB 8, 9, and 10. Do not underestimate that. It's important. So I'm going to go, and one of the Cal E, I thought it was quite telling, one of the Cal E town halls was with Baldwin Hills, south central LA, and they were very much opposed to SB 8, 9, and 10. The homeowners in that area have felt like they've recovered their community, and I'm talking about the outside, the have-nots, if you will, although they feel they have what they have in their home neighborhoods and they like it, and they want local control. So statewide, this is, this is an important issue, and I think you'll find that statewide it is quite well-supported too. So obviously, I'm collecting signatures along with quite a few other people. One of the things I like about this is it would prevent the state from overriding local initiatives such as Prop A or Encinitas' right to vote on upzoning. And so, thank you for bringing it up. I think it's a great discussion. Please have a full discussion, but in the end, I hope you will support it. I will be.
Molly Woods, Drake. Mayor and council members, thank you for your leadership and service, especially in terms of trying to rectify decades of decisions that have led to a housing crisis in Encinitas. I know that Encinitas is not unique in our struggle to meet the rising housing demand of residents and those who wish to call Encinitas home. However, I also understand that we are unique and that Prop A has made this much more difficult to do than it has been for other cities, and as a result, we have faced repercussions from the state. But more importantly, we have faced the consequences of losing incredible residents who can no longer afford to call Encinitas home, as well as the stifling access to others who would like to move here. I'm here today speaking in opposition to the resolution brought forth by Councilmember Krantz. I'd like to share a little about my own housing experience, specifically as an eight-year renter in Encinitas. I've lived in six states, 12 cities, and approximately 16 houses thus far in my life, and it wasn't until I moved to Encinitas that my body and heart breathed a huge sigh of relief knowing that I was home. I think that the one thing everyone in this room can agree on is we're so blessed to call Encinitas home. In our own ways, we all want to make sure it remains a special place we love so much. For me, the relief of knowing Encinitas would be my forever home has never changed in the last eight years, but what has changed is my address, my roommates, and my rent. 1,600 to 3,200 to 3,500 to 3,900. I bet that's a lot more than people's mortgages in this room. And like many of my friends and other renters, which make up 38% of the population in Encinitas, this has come with an ever-present feeling of stress, worry, and dread that someday I will be priced out and have no choice but to move to a different town. I recognize my privilege and good fortune in having a stable and good-paying career, as well as my fiance, who is a firefighter and also makes a great living. Yet, even with our above-middle-class salaries, we have spent the last 14 months looking for a home to buy, to no avail. Hence, the dread of having to move remains, and therefore, I'm an advocate for affordable housing, both for my own desire to remain an Encinitas resident, but also for the other thousands who have the same story as my own. While I do not believe laws like SB 9 are the silver bullets to fixing the housing crisis, I also know will not be the horrible boogeyman many are claiming. I believe that innovative, creative thinkers can look at bills such as SB 9 and look beyond a multimillion-dollar duplex and see the possibility for more affordable smaller units. I believe this is one small step by the state, which can have a positive impact, and even if it only leads to a small percentage of new affordable units being created, those are real lives with real stories that will be positively affected and in turn will positively affect our community. I remain hopeful that someday, one of those families who will benefit from the collaboration between stakeholders, city and state, will be my own, and I look forward to continuing to work together towards progress to make this happen. Thank you.
Up first, it's Tashi, Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council. Mayor and council, my name is Tashi McMillan, and I live here with my wife in Encinitas, and we're renters near the corner of Melrose in Florida, and I'm here today to oppose this motion that would lend support for the tripartisan land use initiative. Housing security and reliability is extremely important to all of us. This is one of the most foundational aspects of our lives and affects us on a daily basis. However, the divide between controlling this aspect of our lives often comes down to the difference between homeownership or renting and leasing. In fact, just the other day, our landlord informed us he wants us to move out soon so he can turn the unit into an Airbnb rental. So now, we're back to looking for housing in this very competitive market. Finding the opportunity to buy a home in Encinitas is extremely challenging and getting worse by the day. As a potential first-time homebuyer, my wife and I are constantly looking for opportunities to stay in Encinitas. My wife grew up here. We want to be here, and this is where we've built our home for the last five years. But overall, we find the proposition of homeownership moving more and more towards a wishful idea and exceedingly less like a reality. I find myself lucky to be in a stable relationship with two income earners, but even now, homeownership in Encinitas looks extremely challenging. We're approaching a situation in Encinitas where there are only three types of homeowners: those who bought their homes 15 or more years ago, those who inherited one of those homes, or multimillionaires who recently bought a home. I don't think this is what we want as a city, and I think we needed to think about a different direction. I think Encinitas is moving in the right direction by easing restrictions on ADUs and improving some developments that will increase housing stock, and I think at this time it's critical that we employ innovative and action-oriented solutions to increase housing, and particularly more affordable housing. And while I do not believe that SB 9 or similar rules are an end-all to fixing the housing crises, I think we don't need to keep the status quo. We need to switch gears, and I don't think this will be a horrible proposal that will decimate neighborhoods that many are complaining or thinking may happen. I believe we can look at bills such as SB 9 and look beyond theoretical developer 10-unit buildings, see the possibilities for smaller units on lots of lands where previously wouldn't have been available where we could build these buildings. I myself have looked at properties with elements of SB 9 in mind, thinking about trying to own our own home, potentially live closer to our aging parents, and increasing density and the potential to split lots would open opportunities for myself and others to potentially own a home in this city. For these reasons, I oppose this agenda item.
Julie Thunder here. First, I'd like to say to the people who spoke really well tonight in opposition to this that I agree with much of what they say. The question here tonight is, do we want to make those decisions about split lots and height of buildings and Prop A, or do we want the state legislators to make those decisions? Do we want people who we elected sitting right here, I prefer to have you make those decisions than somebody from Sacramento who doesn't even know where Encinitas is and can't point to it on a map? They know nothing about our city. They know nothing about our values and what matters to us. You are the ones that we elected to make these decisions, and that's what this is about. Like to start off with saying that I am a petition gather. If any of you would like to sign it, I would be happy to collect it. I've been getting a lot of signatures in Encinitas. It's very popular, and I'd like to thank Tony for bringing this up. I find that you are, you're, sorry, your affiliation with Livable very commendable. I'm also a member but haven't been able to attend in a while. Thank you. I hope you guys will all support this, and I hope you'll help us save Encinitas from overcrowding, from increased traffic, and stressing our infrastructure. This overreach by politicians in Sacramento comes with no provisions for affordable housing, and it was done by politicians who don't even know where we are. You now, the five of you now, have an opportunity to show the people of Encinitas that you truly do represent them and their interests. It's okay to join the growing list of cities supporting this. I'll read a partial list of those cities who have already shown support to make you feel more comfortable in doing so yourselves. Those leaders of these cities are showing allegiance with those they represent. In North County, we have Oceanside, Del Mar, and San Marcos. These are, these cities that I'm reading are cities where the council has voted to support. We have three large jurisdictions. One is the South Bay Council of Governments, which includes 18 cities. They all support this. We have the Southern California Association of Governments, commonly called SCAG, which is 191 cities in Southern California. We have the California Contract Cities Associations. And individual cities outside of our county are Anaheim, Beverly Hills, Corona, Cupertino, El Segundo, Fullerton, Gilroy, Hawthorne, Hermosa Beach, Lomita, Manhattan Beach, Mission Viejo, Monte Serrano, Murrieta, Newport Beach, Ontario, and the list goes on. And the, look at this list. I hope you'll support it, and I hope we can save Encinitas. I think this is the ticket. Thank you.
That concludes speakers.
Okay, thank you. Everybody was really articulate tonight on this subject, so thank you for all of the public comments. I'll go to my colleagues, Council Deputy Mayor Mosca.
Yes, I'll share a couple of thoughts on this item since it's before us. First thought is, it's really early to take a position on a statewide ballot initiative. I just had a conversation with the Secretary of State's office for the state of California, and believe it or not, there are 40 initiatives filed with the Secretary of State's with the intention of circulating. Not all 40 of those will actually get 1 million signatures to get onto the statewide ballot, which is what is needed to get onto a statewide ballot. I did have a chance to talk with the group that's sponsoring this housing initiative, and I think they said something about 25 cities that have sponsored or have signed onto it, like a city council that has actually endorsed it, about 25 cities. There are 480 cities throughout the state of California, so I think there's a lot of work to be done in this initiative, if that's what the plan is. They also disclose about 85 elected officials, and they say former and current elected officials. I talked to the Secretary of State's office. There are 14,000 elected, currently elected representatives in the state of California. So we're talking about less than a percentage of folks that have taken a position on this, directly taken a position on it. When a ballot initiative qualifies for the ballot, it goes through a lot of analysis. There's actually a policy analyst for the state of California that analyzes the document. Our attorneys for the state of California look at it. Our budget office looks at it as well, and all of that information is disclosed to the voters. Because if initiative does get 1 million signatures, 1 million signatures, it then goes onto the ballot, and it's a discussion for the voters at large statewide. It's not a discussion for the city of Encinitas. It's a discussion for the voters statewide. So if, in fact, 1 million people sign onto this initiative, then the voters, they, those voters that signed on, and all of the voters throughout the state of California get to have that discussion, and they get to vote on it. But we don't actually vote on it here at the city of Encinitas. We actually continue to focus on the things that are before us, all of the important items that are before us, like housing. And so I would say that it's not only too early, but it's not really relevant to us because it's not something we can even control. It's nothing we can control. It's not within our control. This is something, if voters sign it and there are millions of signatures statewide, which it doesn't look like it's even on par for doing that. It doesn't look like it even has that support, but if it does, the voters statewide get to decide that and not the city of Encinitas. So I don't think it's actually relevant. But in terms of the policy, I think it's the wrong policy for the city of Encinitas, and I think it's the wrong policy for the state of California. Housing and focusing on housing opportunities at all income levels is exactly what we need to do as a state and exactly what we need to do as a city. We need to be talking about how do we find, how do we create affordable housing opportunities, housing opportunities at all income levels for people in the city of Encinitas so that my parents can live here, your parents can live here, so that people that want to live here can live here, so that my children have a place to come back to and can live here, so that the people that are, that are working here in the city of Encinitas can actually afford to live here. So police officers, firefighters, teachers, people that are working in the city can actually live here. Do you know what, how hard it is to recruit good employees? We do have good employees here. How hard it is to recruit employees because there aren't really good housing opportunities, not only in the city of Encinitas, but all in the surrounding areas. How do you find a quality place to live and work for the city of Encinitas? It's just nearly impossible. And so what we need to do is be focusing on how we're going to basically address that by focusing on housing, affordable housing opportunities and housing opportunities at all income levels. And I think that it's already been said before that housing is so, it's at the intersection of so many challenges that we're facing from climate change, you know, inequality to congestion. Every voter that I talk to talks about the congestion of roads, right? But yet, if we don't address the housing crisis, then people are traveling further and further away from the city of Encinitas, further away from the places that they live. It's so intertwined with so many other important issues, and if we're not going to do anything, the erosion of our economy locally throughout the state of California will continue, and we're not going to continue to have, you know, the job opportunities in the state of California as we have had in the past. And so I think that, and you know, the other thing that we've been, we've been tackling is homelessness. This is such a serious issue. You know, a lot of folks talk about the folks that they see on the streets and that are mentally ill, but during this pandemic, there have been more and more people that are falling behind, that are, that are, you know, sleeping on the streets, that are sleeping in their cars. I see them all the time. You know, they're sleeping in their cars. There are more and more people coming to our churches for the food pantries, people that are food insecure. All of this has to do with housing. Housing touches every single one of these issues, and so for me, it's abundantly clear. The position of this city ought to be that we are leading on this issue and that we're working cooperatively with the state. I think in the past, the state has tried to push cities out, and I oppose that too. A true partnership between the state and the city is what is needed here. The cities ought not be trying through this type of a housing initiative to push the state out, and the state ought not be trying to push the cities out. We should be working together to come up with solutions that make sense for our cities and make sense for every city throughout the state of California. So I'm not going to vote yes on this because I think it's too early. I don't think we should be taking positions on statewide ballot initiatives that actually go out to the voters, and there are 40 initiatives that may actually, that more, most of these are not going to qualify. And so we haven't even had a chance to look at the analysis of this. We don't even know if it's going to qualify, but even if it does, and it says, it does everything that they say it's going to do, the fact is that it's for the voters statewide to decide, not the city council of Encinitas, and it's the bad, it's the wrong choice for us. It's not the right policy direction. It's not who we are, and it's not what we ought to be doing for the future. We ought to be focused on solutions. This is not going to be a solution. It's just going to step us back.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henze.
Thank you. That was very eloquent to my colleague, Councilmember Mosca. You covered a lot of the things I was wanting to say too, and I would like to start off by saying that I have great respect for my colleague, Councilmember Krantz, but I also am in opposition to this suggestion here tonight. And, you know, it really calls into question a lot of existential ideas that my generation in particular is dealing with, and, you know, to me, I am looking at a future where I might be passing on an uninhabitable planet to my children and to my grandchildren. And when I think about what problems we as a city council need to be solving now to be able to make sure that there is a planet to inhabit, to make sure that there's housing for our future generations to live in, honestly, parking and traffic fall very low on that list of priorities because I don't think we can build wider roads. I don't think we can accommodate more single-use vehicles. We've run out of room. So while, while I do understand that there are those who have homes, I mean, what a blessing, what a blessing to own a home. There are so many of us in Encinitas who will never be able to achieve that. And so these problems that we're facing, so many of my generation, and I expect a generation after me will be facing too, is just basic housing security. And to me, that is a problem for even the homeowners if there is insecurity in that. I expect COVID to just be the first of many huge challenges that bring us into chaos and create crises that are further worsening the stability that we count on and we're in the homes that we live in. And so to me, it's a problem of the privileged to have a home and fear that there would be more homes created in your community. This, to me, is really about building a bigger table. How do we all live here together more harmoniously? How do we tackle these issues together? Instead of seeing the homeowners or the renters as a problem, it's that all of us together are the solution. And like Tashi McMillan so articulated so well, the answer is often that you split a home. I've grown up in a multi-generational household. I think, you know, at least three of us sitting up here have also done the same, and I think that SB 9 actually creates that opportunity. I also think that the open-the-gate analogy, you know, at a time, I'm sure that was the case. I'm sure that when the city incorporated, there was this feeling of, let's protect our paradise, and I do share that feeling as well. But I also see that when you can't even provide for the generation who grew up here to continue living here, you're not only closing the gate, but you're severing the links, the very links that we have to remembering who we are and our community character. So when I think about community character, especially in my district, it's one of the blue-collar working class, the folks who built the railroad, who are able to afford houses near the railroad, who built, you know, a granny flat in the back to accommodate their grandma or their auntie. That is what my community character is. It's very dense. It's already a lot of duplexes, and I think that that is what we value about downtown Encinitas and about District 2. So providing more opportunities to create that throughout the rest of the city seems to me an asset. to me an asset. The problem, all right, the problem of state control here, nobody likes that. And I think, you know, when I graduated from college, that's probably when Prop A was circulating. I remember signing it. I remember thinking, this is great. But arguably, Prop A has gotten us even more scrutiny and more state control. And Encinitas has a target on our back because we have failed so profoundly to actually keep up with what other cities around us have been able to do. So to me, it's different that a city like Solana Beach wants to oppose state control because they have kept up with housing mandates. They have been able to zone in their city. We had not done that for 30 years. And so to me, it's like the Chinese finger trap in Encinitas, where the, the harder that we pull to buck this state control, the more of our control we actually lose. So let's see, what else I wanted to say here? I mean, one, one last thought that I do have is that, you know, it seems to me that the tide is changing a bit, where so many people are realizing how vulnerable they are in their current housing. So it's really no shock that SB 9 finally passed in a year where folks were isolated in their homes. And you could have people who are parents of young children, caregivers, or those who are actively participating in the workforce, who could take part in the public process because they could participate virtually. They could be at work and they could call in and they could support bills that otherwise take sitting in a room, being at a city council meeting at night when your kids are trying to go to bed, and, you know, all the constraints that come with participation. So that covers everything. But yeah, I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the chance to have this discussion. And I think that, you know, I don't think it's in the best interest of our city to sign on to this measure.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lyons.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. I support affordable housing and missing middle housing. And I, and I'll do anything possible to help move that forward in our community. I think it's a real, a real gap we have that we need to address as soon as possible. I say that because I know a lot of families who've lived here for generations, and they tell me their adult children can't, can't afford to live here. What that is, is we're losing our character. We're losing our people. We're losing our, our next generation. Also, our seniors are beginning to have challenges, and I hear that from constituents who come forward to us. If we can't continue to provide housing options that support these individuals, then what we do is we lose our character. And I'm really sensitive to that. I, I think that the right way forward is to, to really push for the range of housing that we need to keep people here. And I, I believe people know that I didn't support SB 9 or SB 10, and I wrote a letter saying that to the governor and the authors of the bills. And I'm not a big fan of it. So I'm a little bit a different position than some of my colleagues. But I, I do want to say that I don't think this is the right tool. I think for a couple of reasons. One, I don't think it's meaningful for us to have a resolution. I think this will go through the process that it goes through with the state, and whether or not we're, we have a resolution that makes a statement. I do want to point out something that I haven't heard anyone talk about yet, but I've begun to become a little bit sensitive to this, and that is how we use the phrase "local control." A constituent sent me information on this, on the media that's backing this, this resolution, some things that have put together, been put together locally and more regionally. And I get the feeling that when I, when I say local control, I might think, yeah, I want it to be sustainable. I want it to be context-sensitive. I want it to integrate with our infrastructure. That's all the local control that I'm thinking. I like that. But I think what, what, so what, what, of course, it's kind, it's clear. I mean, it even says it in the resolution, this is no growth. This is no growth. And that's different. And I think a lot of people who are looking at this briefly and thinking, oh, let's be sustainable, let's integrate with our infrastructure, they think that's what they're, they're agreeing to. And honestly, I, I don't see that in the text of the document. It's actually quite vague and unspecific. And so I worry, I worry it's a bit of a Trojan horse, where the information around it is meant to incite instead of inform. And anytime I see that, I, I think there's something going on. And when I say that, it's because the information I see in the media does not represent what SB 9 is exactly. For instance, there, there are statements like, this will apply to every single family house or every single family property. Well, that's not true. It doesn't. And so I get concerned about that. So in looking over this information, I saw a lot of hotspots, and I think they're important to call attention to. I would really like a better relationship with the state. I agree with that sentiment. I was just appointed to the League of California Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee, where I will be working with our state leaders and our lobbyists to improve how our cities and our states regulate development. I'll bring information to them, and I'll bring that back to our community. I work within the system. I want to improve our partnership with the state. I don't think amending the constitution is the right tool. So that's where I'll stand on this. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the really thoughtful comments that my colleagues have all put into this, and also, again, the public speakers, who all really thought a lot about what you wanted to say, and, and it really resonates a lot of the different comments that have been made tonight. So I'll share my perspective, which is that I also do not support this resolution. And I think it can be very seductive to think that local control is a panacea for a lot of problems, because the idea that you get it closest to the people, and somehow that's going to lead to a better result. But I, I think that there are things like, for example, we, we don't leave it to locals to decide if we're going to wall off the coast. We have a state law and a coastal commission that says, we are going to allow public access because public access is a public good. And I see affordable housing as a public good. I see a well-integrated community as a public good. I see dealing with homelessness as a public good. And, and so the question of what problem are we solving for, I think is really important to think about here. And, you know, Bob Ayers wrote such a, such a fascinating piece, and I thought it was just rang so true to me, that the initiative is about control of the gate. And so the question of, are you, are we giving control of the gate to the people who are already inside? Or are we allowing it to be more collectively worked on as a problem? So to me, these societal problems should be worked on at all levels. I'd like the federal government more involved in housing. They used to provide much more funding for housing, and they're not involved in that at all. They used to provide much more funding for mental health services. And these are things that have been, historically have been disinvested in over the last 40 years, and we're really suffering because of it. So to me, housing is something where we have a shared responsibility. A local government, state government, and federal government should all be working toward the, the problems that we see that are surrounding housing. And I think it's also important to note that the local governments really have not solved for this very well. So if you look at past success to determine future success, you could envision a city, not our city, but another city, who said, we don't want to have any affordable housing. We want to provide less than 10%. If we have 1,000 as a need, and we provide 93 units in a year, and we provide less than 10%, that that's not a high priority for that council, or those leaders, or that community. But is that really true? Or is it a series, a combination of all sorts of other things? I mean, to me, it really speaks to the point that we need to have all hands on deck. We need to have everybody at all levels working toward this, to, to the solutions to this problem. So let's see if I have anything else I want to share here. I mean, I think that's the gist of it. I, I will say that it, the, at first, when it very first came out, it did seem like a really interesting idea that would solve for things, but then actually reading it and thinking deeply about it, and my own personal philosophy, that question of what are we solving for, I think is the key question. So I see that your hand's gone back up, Councilmember Carrance, so we'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, because I would like to just point out that all of the passionate speeches that we've heard right here about housing and attacking the problem of housing, this particular measure has no direct effect on that. This council would be able to continue to passionately advocate for the construction of affordable housing. That's not going to stop. There's some, there's, there's an odd connection between this constitutional amendment, which grants local control to the city council, that says, oh, now we can't get anything done. Wait a minute. We have just very, you know, it was very difficult, mostly because of the state's involvement, in getting a housing element approved. All of our task force work was driven by, what will the state allow us to do and what will they not? And so, you know, the, this notion that this initiative, which would grant local control to the municipals, municipalities, would somehow end the quest for affordable housing and building housing is just nuts. I'm not a, I'm not a no-growth guy. You can ask Gerald Sedomka, and, you know, there's, I've, I've advocated for housing since day one. And, you know, it's something that I was aggressively making an effort to get an approved housing element back in 2014, before the mayor was even on the council. So this notion that I'm this supportive of this in some way so that we don't have to worry about housing anymore is just nuts. To Councilmember Mosca's point, Deputy Mayor Mosca's point, I want to lead on this. That's why I brought it. This note, this idea that we'll just wait and see what others do? No, I want to lead. That's what I'm interested in doing, is leading. So that's why I brought it, and I will be circulating petitions, and I look forward to its passage and the aggressive effort that the five members of the city council will make in order to build affordable housing. We're, we're not off the hook if this passes. In fact, we're more on the hook. It's up to us. And so I have appreciated serving with, with you folks, and we've gotten a lot done over the last year, half, last few years, and I expect that work to continue. You asked about the problem that this is for? One problem. We put a voter, a measure to the voters that had roughly 1,600 units that were, had this affordable housing overlay. And we said, we're going to update our housing element. 1,600 units. We currently have about 2,500 units worth of projects in the pipeline because of density bonus. Credibility is zilch. You can't go to the voters and say, hey, pass this housing element update, you know, we need this many units. The voters know that it's going to be heck of a lot more than that. So I'm looking for ways, without the heavy hand of the government, state government, I'm looking for ways to be able to have a conversation with the community that says, we need affordable housing, we need this much density, we may need duplexes. I live next door to a duplex, 40-year-old duplex just sold for $3.1 million. Duplexes are not going to be affordable. Bad bill, heavy-handed, short timeline. The process has been terrible. We're now going to the planning commission. So, you know, I agree, all three levels of government should be involved in this. The state and the federal government should provide us with resources. They should provide us with the resources to fix our roads, address traffic issues, provide more public transportation, and leave us alone to solve the problems. Because we are a very creative bunch. We have some very creative people in our community, and we're all very dedicated to building more housing to address the housing shortage. So I recognize that I'm going to be the Lone Ranger here, so won't bother with a motion. I appreciate the conversation, and I look forward to continuing the conversation through to November.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to our next item. So thank you to the public, and our next item is Councilmember-initiated item from Deputy Mayor Mosca and me about consideration of banning ghost guns in the city of Encinitas. So would you like to speak first, or would you like me to?
I, I'll just make some really initial comments, and then you can kind of, we can tag team here. So just inspired by what the city of San Diego has put forth, and recently the county of San Diego with their ordinance banning ghost guns, the data has shown over the last several years that, that the amount of ghost guns that have been making their way onto our streets and, and participating in gun violence in this county and throughout the state of California has just grown tremendously. In fact, I think the county of San Diego is actually one of the highest increase in ghost guns and gun violence in the entire state of all the 50 different counties in the state of California. So the, the resolution before us, or the, the item before us is to essentially direct city staff to bring back a, an ordinance banning ghost guns in the city of Encinitas, similar to what the county has done for the unincorporated areas, and the city of San Diego has done for the city of San Diego. Ghost guns, in case you don't know, these are guns that are assembled by, by people that, that, they're not sold at shops. They don't have serial numbers, and so therefore, they're, they're not necessarily firearms. But people can send away for these pieces and then put it together. They're supposed to then file for a serial number, but they don't. And a lot of these unserialized ghost guns then are in the hands of people that are prohibited from actually possessing a firearm. And so it's a problem. And so I think that the county of San Diego and their lead, and the city of San Diego and their lead in, in doing something about this is the right policy for them, and it's the right policy for the city of Encinitas. There has been, I, I think there has been actually an incident, a crime in the past where a ghost gun was, was, was also part of that gun violence here in the city of Encinitas as well. And we've had our own increase, numbers of ghost guns making it onto our streets. So this is another opportunity for us to make our streets as safe as possible, and to ensure that illegal firearms are not possessed by people that are prohibited from possessing firearms.
Well, thank you. I want to thank my Councilmember Mosca, and he did a great job of explaining that right there. I just, I just want to clarify a couple of things. So one is that, of course, our law enforcement agency is the sheriff, and the sheriff is, the main employer is the county, and the county has passed an ordinance that would ban these ghost gun parts following the city's, or the city of San Diego ordinance. And when I was reading the news article that was describing this decision, it was saying that the county's land use authority is the unincorporated county. So basically, they are passing this to be applied in the unincorporated county. And so the goal of this is to bring the regulations into the city of Encinitas. And, and I think it's important also to just, I don't, I see this as being substantive, not just like political theater. I, I actually do think that there is a loophole around these ghost guns, because even though you have to have a serial number in order to buy a gun, this actually prohibits this specific problem. And we, and in all the jurisdictions, we see a 20% to 30% rise in the number of ghost guns. So instead of just saying, you know, this is what you're supposed to have, it's saying, this particular thing you are not allowed to have. And so, and I'll just read one sentence from, Marnie Von Wilpert is the newly-elected city council member, relatively new, a year ago, who's an attorney and has worked in this specific area, and drafted the regulation that the city of San Diego came forward with. And she wrote an editorial in the newspaper, and she says, I'm just going to read one sentence. She says, "This ordinance is about stopping the problem at the source, preventing the nonserialized gun kits from being sold in San Diego in the first place." So I think that it's important that we do this, and I think that it shouldn't be too much work for our city attorney to help draft it, because the county and the city of San Diego have already done it. So we should be able to lift the ordinances that they have, and make it really clear what you're not allowed to have in the city of Encinitas or to sell. So, you know, you cannot be selling something online that's a, that are these parts of guns that can then just be put together watching a video. So, so that's, I'm really grateful to my council colleague here, and I'm, I see, do we have a comment from the sheriff on this? No?
I just hear if you had any questions.
Oh, okay. Well, what do you think?
I also wanted to add, you talk about kits being purchased, but also the manufacturing, you know, the, the lower of the handgun are being based off 3D printers is how they're manufacturing. So, you know, somebody that had a 3D printer here in the city of Encinitas could actually be manufacturing the lower part, and then the rest of the parts are basically purchased on the internet and assembled as a gun.
Right.
So it's also the manufacturing through 3D printers. So, it's also the manufacturing through 3D printers. That's what we're more concerned about, because we know about the purchasing of the parts. But the actual manufacturing, the Palomar, you know, manufactured the 3D lowers.
Right. Yeah, that's a great point. And so, and also, I mean, from having had this conversation a little bit about some of these other areas, like safe storage requirements, it seems like there are times where there's some type of criminal activity, and this is another thing that's added on that can flag somebody who's a problem. So, like, if you see most of the parts of a ghost gun that are being created in someone's home from a 3D printer, you know, that if that's prohibited in the city of Encinitas, then that is something that you can use to pursue the other problems, right? So, it's partly about being able to give law enforcement more tools and to try to cut down on gun violence. I mean, ultimately, we're trying to reduce gun violence. And so, these are, these guns are making their way into our homes and our society at such a high rate that we want to really try to get in front of that. Councilmember Crans?
I do have a question for the sheriff captain. Are you seeing in any of the situations where you're making arrests for weapons violations or any other violations that maybe somebody is carrying these ghost guns?
Well, I actually, when I knew this was on the agenda item, I actually did an analysis of how many ghost guns were actually seized. This is a very safe community, which is a good thing as far as ghost gun seizures. Last year, we only had three ghost gun seizures. Unfortunately, one of those ghost gun seizures led to an officer-involved shooting, the one that occurred in June. Another one was located during a search, a search warrant. And then, another one was actually found in a hotel room at the day's end that was basically abandoned there. So, in comparable numbers, I actually compared us to San Marcos, another comparable-sized city. And in that city, they actually seized 20 ghost guns in 2021. So, we are a relatively safe city. But, you know, guns float around, so that's just to say how many we have actually seized within the city.
Well, fortunately, I think cities are exempt from plagiarism rules. So, I would support picking up something and bringing it to us. You know, I definitely want to see these gone or as minimal as possible. I know we do, we got the memo today. The state has a law on the books, so it is illegal. But, you know, I do support doing everything we can to speak to this issue.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lyons?
I agree that this will improve our public safety. And if, Councilmember Crans, if that wasn't actually a motion, then I will, I will move.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I will move to bring this forward for staff to put together the documents regarding consideration of a ban on ghost guns.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, no, sorry. Let's go to the public comments.
Okay, you don't need to. Okay. Okay, so, just for the record, Theresa Beauchamp, Bob Ayers, and Molly Woods are registering support, but do not wish to speak.
Did Councilmember Crans hear that comment? It was, Bob Ayers said, "I'm glad to be realigned with Councilmember Crans." Okay, so, let's go ahead and vote then.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Great. Well, that's the end of the agenda. We've been here since 3:00.
Thank you, public speakers.
Yes, thank you, the public speakers, for staying till 10:00. And any other person want to share anything? So, yes, go ahead.
So, the Shoreline Preservation Working Group met this month, and Joy joined us as my alternate. And we were discussing in great detail the Oceanside proposal to add groynes. And so, you know, Oceanside has experienced just a tremendous loss of beach sand, and they rarely have dry sand on their beaches. So, they've put together this proposal to actually install jetties, which are groynes. And it's for the purpose of sand retention. So, you know, you can nourish the beach like we're going to do, but at the end of the day, it won't stay unless they can do something to stabilize the beaches. So, Carlsbad has taken a formal position in opposition to the groin project. They voted on that. And it was in the form of a resolution. And I'm just looking for, I have a suggestion and then looking for a little input from my colleagues, because what my suggestion is, is that we designate Jamie Timberlake, who is our, you know, all things beaches-related, to reach out to Oceanside and ask that Encinitas be a formal stakeholder as the process continues. And I do think it's really important that we get that designation, because it will affect our beaches in terms of what the monitoring looks like. How do those monitoring studies show us that we are being affected? The second step would be mitigation. If there are effects to our beaches, how do we want to be compensated for that? And then, the last one is, there's a possibility that this effort of installing the groynes won't actually have the effect that Oceanside's hoping. And if that's the case, they'll have to disassemble them. And so, if so, we want to be able to participate in that removal process as well. So, you know, I brought up to the Shoreline Preservation Working Group, does that committee itself want to participate as the stakeholder? And due to the participation from southern cities in San Diego, they weren't interested in participating. So, the alternatives that we have is either form a subcommittee with the other north county coastal cities to participate as a formal stakeholder, or just do so on our own. Because the effects will be different for every city, for Carlsbad, Encinitas, Solana Beach, and Del Mar. So, that's the update. My suggestion is that we write a letter, ask to be formally recognized as stakeholders to be included as the process moves forward.
As individual stakeholders.
Either way, we could be individual stakeholders, or we could work with our north county coastal cities to do so. It just might be a little bit more time-consuming to do so.
I would support your suggestion that she be a designee from the city to be officially recognized stakeholder, if they would accept a city staffer as a stakeholder.
Yeah, and I, there might be some questions with the city attorney and the city manager if that's.
You have to add it as an agenda item.
Okay.
Okay. But I guess the other thing is, whatever a position would be, I don't want her taking a position on our behalf without us weighing in on it. Because I have, you know, heard different positions that are maybe like, "Oh, it's not that big a deal." And I'm not sure that if, especially with the coastal commissions is not going to approve it, and we would be starved of sand. You know, I just, these are decisions that should be made by policymakers. So, I want to make sure that she's, you know, not, has a completely different perspective than what we have.
In the past, the shoreline preservation has been more of an advisory group, and it's kind of an educational and dissemination of information. And so, Kathy Weldon, prior to Jamie, was in fact the representative. She was the one that was going to all those meetings. I served on the shoreline preservation a little bit. I think, you know, prior to that, Teresa Barth had. So, it's, it's important for our city, but I think the key is to have somebody there. And if Jamie can do it, then that's great. I guess bring it back as an agenda item, that'd be great.
I just, back to the agenda. It was noticed that she went to the Carlsbad meeting as a resident. And so, I think that you should have a discussion and allow both sides of the issue to come and speak to you, so you decide what kind of action you want to take. It's a big deal to do something that one city wants to do and the other city thinks that it hurts them. And I think you probably need to have some discussion around that.
Well, it wasn't presented as if we were making a decision. It was presented more that she would just be a liaison. Is that, I mean, unless you're, are you suggesting that we weigh in on Oceanside's proposal?
I am suggesting that Jamie be able to participate to the extent that she could flag something for us if she does think it's time for us to weigh in on it. Up to this point, she and I communicated about it a lot. She advises me as the representative on the Shoreline Preservation Working Group. And my opinion at this point is that we don't weigh in on it either way, because there's still so much to be studied and understood. But if she's able to participate in that process and use her staff time to do that, that's what I would recommend.
But, I just saw on the news, Carlsbad did have it on their agenda and had the conversation. And I do think that we should be considering that. Obviously, the sand is moving south. And so, whatever Oceanside does, especially related to the groynes, we, it's critical stake in. So, yeah. And, and so, getting that expert and getting it on to a council member, I mean, not a council member, but a staff, you know, get it on an agenda, I think that's great.
Yeah, so, Carlsbad's a little different than Encinitas, because they actually have a committee that does coastal issues, that made that recommendation to the council that they wanted to oppose. And furthermore, council, or Carlsbad was really, I think, kind of put off because Oceanside hadn't offered the formal participation until the 11th hour. But if they're offering that to us, then we'll be able to participate and get the information when it's timely.
On the AB 1234 side.
Yes.
NCTD had a meeting back December, and we haven't met since then. So, I will tell you that, as has been per usual with NCTD, we had a controversial issue on there, having to do with transnet funding. And so, we had a big discussion about how to pursue, I think everybody, I've mentioned before, that coaster services have been enhanced. There are significantly more trains that are running. This was all, we spent years procuring the equipment and making the double tracking and repairs and things to get to the point where we could do this. But it was always intended for transnets, what's known as the 8.1% category of money that's been collected in transnet. And so, that was going to pay for the operations. So, the payroll expenses and other things were going to be paid for through the 8.1. The problem is that the 8.1, all of transnet is, you know, the tax revenues haven't been what they had originally projected. So, there's this shortage. And the coaster enhancements have, the timing of them is, you know, it comes at the same time as the blue line expanded, the trolley in, from Old Town, or from, you know, up to UTC. So, there's this competition for funds. And so, Sandag at one point was looking to make an amendment to the transnet ordinance that would essentially defund expanded coaster services. So, we had a conversation about that, and we put together a letter. And it's going to be likely circulated to elected officials in north county. So, if you see the letter, take a look at it and give it a good read. Mayor Blakesby, as the chairwoman of Sandag, has been in the middle of the whole back-and-forth, the struggle to figure out how to continue to operate the expanded coaster services. But it's a difficult conversation, as is anything when it comes to unexpected revenue shortfalls. So, there's that. I also wanted to mention that we have an NCTD meeting tomorrow. We had a public speaker talk about that. It's the very complicated issue of fencing in Del Mar. And there is a NCTD website. Go nctd.com. And if you Google trespasser mitigate, or if you search for trespasser mitigation, you'll hit a webpage that is loaded with information and can address some of, you know, provide information that is based upon fact. There's a lot of misconceptions out there. And it's going to be quite a meeting tomorrow when we talk about the fencing in Del Mar. So, and it will be my last meeting as a board member of NCTD.
Way to go out on a bang, I know.
I didn't feel comfortable leaving this for Kelly to have to deal with. So, the smell of this knock-down, drag-out fight that is sure to happen, I will take out with me, and she'll come in fresh.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that everything you said is exactly accurate. It's really difficult negotiations between MTS, NCTD, and Sandag. And it's just rough. And then, also, Councilmember Crans did a great job at Sandag of explaining NCTD's position, pulling up that website, talking about fencing as separate from crossing, as separate from the bluff stabilization and moving the railroad track. And really, it gave great context. I think you were a great ambassador to the board with that. And so, we're grateful that you're handling this meeting tomorrow. Good luck.
Thank you. I'll need it. The best part of it is that it's on Zoom. So, the pitchforks and the torches, I won't, you know, they won't have any direct.
What time does it start?
2:00.
Okay. Okay. Any other AB 1234? No? Okay. Any city manager report, city attorney report, city clerk report?
Just really fast, and I don't want to take up too much time. I just wanted to let you know that as of today, the special counsel for the San Diego City Attorneys Association for the League was unsuccessful in trying to depublish a case before the Supreme Court of California, I mean, Supreme Court of California. And that had to do with disseminating materials by the city manager or other to a majority or more of a council, that you can't do that outside of a meeting unless those materials are also available to the public at large, which makes it very difficult unless you have a big board and if you've got a lot of different things to disseminate. So, unfortunately, that was not successful. So, I think the league's going to try to do legislation that really kind of cuts at that and makes it easier. But it's a biggie, because it's a lack of information to you, the council, to get ready for things. So, I'll keep you posted on that.
So, that would be like incident reports of things that happen in the city?
Arguably, unless the city manager can make those reports available to the public in some sort of bulletin board or public way. That's what the, that's what special counsel tried to tell the Supreme Court, is that it's impractical. I mean, it's just too difficult. So, I got to find out more soon. But it was kind of like a gasping sort of update. Okay?
Well, thank you for sharing the update. Yeah. City clerk report?
No report?
No? Okay. Okay, well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.[1797.38]